All right, everybody. We need just about one more minute to try to work through the technical issues here.
I'm calling this Newington Board of Education meeting to order. The time now is 7:08 PM. As you are able, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. As many of you are aware, in our nation, we have experienced another major tragedy. So I'm going to ask for a call to take a moment of silence in recognition of that great tragedy in the elementary school in Texas. Our hearts certainly do go out to all of the families that have experienced this great loss there. Ms. Craig, would you call the roll?
Danielle Droste. Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Present.
Beth Maggie Cutbagnari. Richard LaBarriere. Amy Piratti.
Here.
Sam Sharma.
Here.
Jessica Weaver.
Here.
Anastasia Yeh.
Here.
I have everybody here except Mr. LaBarriere.
Okay, so moving on, we are going to move into Agenda Item B, Presentation of Awards and Proclamations. First, we are going to give our appreciation to NCTV. The Board of Education would like to share appreciation with the NCTV staff for the support provided in communicating Board of Education meetings and various school activities to the public. It is a pleasure to turn to Channel 1416 to view programs relating to our school system. It is important for the school district to provide information to the community on the accomplishments and needs in Newington. Many members of the public have commented on viewing the presentations on Channel 14 and 16. It's an additional step to foster greater communication between the schools and the community. The Board would like to make this small donation to your organization, and we sincerely appreciate your support. So I don't see anyone from NCTV here to receive this. So we will make sure that they get that. And what I'm going to be doing tonight is during these presentations, I'm going to hold all comments until everything is completed for the sake of time. Moving on, we are now going to recognize the Cabe Student Leadership Award recipients. So these students were nominated by their school principal for exhibiting distinguished leadership in school activities and daily life. The criteria for this award are based on their leadership skills, which include: willingness to take on challenges, capacity to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, willingness to commit time to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, ability to honor a commitment. And the following students have been selected to receive the annual Cabe Student Leadership Award. And please forgive me if I do not pronounce your name quite accurately. But as I call your name, if you wouldn't mind, I think we'll bring them all. Or we'll have you all come up here. As I call your name, come and stand, and we will hand you these certificates. First, Thomas Donopoli. He's online. Okay, very good. Stay where you are. Margaret Kruzevsky. Emma Federicks. Abigail Pratt. Brenda DeBoy. And Vidisha Thacker. These are our recipients tonight. Congratulations to each one of you. Just take a moment and stand there if anybody wants to get a photo. Okay, thank you all so very much. Now, that is our final presentation of awards for tonight, so I will open it up for board comments. Ms. Weaver?
He was like pointing me before I did. Just want to say congratulations. One, thank you to NCTV as always. We're good. Okay, sorry. And want to congratulate every single student here, Thomas online. I think when we talk about student leadership awards, particularly those that are picked by the principals, it's really something that's impressive because it's not just your grade, it's not just your classroom, it's school-wide. And it's picked by your building principal, and I think that really just shows not only the leadership abilities you have that you can portray in your everyday school life, but what it shows to these principals, the teachers, everyone noticing your leadership, which means that it's impactful. So I just want to give a congratulations to every single one of you, like to see all of my girls in the room. Would love to see you up here one day as well, but I think recognizing leadership now, I can't wait to see where you go. Vidisha, and our older folks, can't wait to see where you go too. This is just the beginning, but we always talk about the portrait of a graduate and what that means for a student, and I think we use these awards to really show those portrait of a graduate, what we want Newington students to look like, not just now, but in the future, and the potential that you have. So it's not just the potential you have, but also what you've shown already as leaders in your schools. So congratulations to all of you, and congratulations to your parents as well.
All right, thank you. And online, Sam Sharma.
Hey, I just want to quickly thank, first of all, like, NCTV for, like, basically covering our BOE meetings, and then also making them available on YouTube, so regular folks can watch. And I want to congratulate all the students who won the leadership award, so, you know, keep leading and keep inspiring. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the room? Mr. Brandt.
All right, so first of all, Thomas, I see you up there. Thomas is awesome. Thomas was, his sister was on my soccer team last year, and Thomas exhibited all of the characteristics that were read about him on the soccer field as a fan and a supporter and as a brother, so congratulations to you, Thomas. To everybody else, you know, Ms. Weaver honestly summed it up pretty well, but I think that, you know, some of the characteristics that I heard were overcoming challenges, empathy for others, committed to task, and I just wanted to say congratulations to everybody on representing not only the school district, but this town in such a great way, and we're so proud of you, and congratulations to the parents, because I'm sure the apple doesn't fall far.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Any comments, Dr. Brummet?
Sure, comment. NCTV, we do appreciate your support of our board meetings. Patty Foley was honored last night at the town council, and she's a big supporter of NCTV, and to all of our students, as stated by our board members, we appreciate your leadership, your character, and all that you have done to make our school district a better place, and that's why you're here. So thank you.
Okay, are any of the principals of these students with us, either online? Mr. Dayas, I see you on the screen. Do you want to say anything?
I'd be happy to. Hi, everyone, sorry, couldn't join you in person there tonight. Special congratulations to Abby and to Emma and to our NHS and MK recipients. As far as John Wallace goes, these two are just so impressive with, you know, not only demonstrating their leadership skills, but having empathy for others and really helping us to just ensure John Wallace and our schools are an inclusive place for all. So congratulations, well-deserved, and I'm so excited to learn about the future endeavors from all of you. I know that we are in good hands, so congratulations.
All right, thank you, and I do want to say congratulations once again to each one of you. It's a deserving certificate, a deserving recognition that you've received. Just keep it up. The world needs good leaders right now, and you're the ones that are on deck. Amen. So be it. All right. We are now going to move on to public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. You can either speak in person if you are here, or you can call in. The phone number is 860-665-8659. We limit the participation to three minutes. So is there anyone in the room that wishes to participate? Okay, I don't see anyone in the room. Online, we have Dana Havens.
Hi, Dana Havens. That's right, I don't have to give my address, do I? Dana Havens, Newington. All right, I was just saying, first of all, thank you for commemorating Texas and these kids that you acknowledged today were just amazing. And also, I am calling about the dress code. I believe fashion dictates a bit of a change, but I think you need to change a little bit of warning, of the wording, or you're going to see things are just too inappropriate. And I did contact somebody on the policy committee, so she knows my feelings, and hopefully she thought it through. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is nobody else online? There's nobody else in the room? You're making this meeting too easy. Oh, no. Okay, we're going to go to Item D, which is our consent agenda, and we need to do the approval of the minutes from April 20, 2022, and the approval of minutes from May 11, 2022. I will entertain a motion for each one of them individually. Mr. Brandt.
Motion to approve the minutes from April 20, 2022.
Second, anyone? Second is made? Okay, and let's call the roll.
Michael Branda.
Yes.
Danielle Drozd. I said yes, I don't know if you can hear me.
We do now.
Okay, cool, I'll speak louder. Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Manki-Hutbagnar.
Yes.
Amy Piratti.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yapp.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, and now we need a motion for the approval of the minutes for May 11, 2022.
Move to approve the minutes for May 11, 2022.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Let's call the roll again, please.
Michael Branda.
Yes.
Danielle Drozd.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Manki-Hutbagnar.
Yes.
Amy Piratti.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yapp.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Very good, thank you very much, everybody. Agenda Item E, Superintendent of Schools Report. There will be a presentation now from our Security and Residency Officer, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I can't think of a more timely presentation than to have Mike Morgan, who's done a superior job as our Director of Security and Residency, and he will be discussing this evening all the things that he has done collectively with our administration to make the school district as safe as humanly possible. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you so much for having me tonight, thank you. And tonight, I'd like to provide an overview of our security program here in Newington, and give the board an idea of where we've come, where we're going, and just how significant this topic is, especially now, and just thank you to everyone who acknowledged what happened in Texas, and, you know, it just brings to the forefront what a significant issue school security is, and how important it is to this community and all the communities across America. So I'd like to start with our security program as it currently is, and right now, we are fortunate enough to have a uniformed security officer in every single one of our schools here in Newington, and that is so incredibly important, obviously, to protect our schools, to act as a deterrent for anyone who may wish harm upon one of our buildings. You can see in one of those photos that not only do we have the uniformed security officers, we have our clearly marked vehicles, and I'm sure all of you have seen those positioned around our school properties, patrolling the exteriors, parked out front as a clear sign that we are here, we have security, and this is at the forefront for our schools. If you could advance the slide, please, Dr. Brummet? All right, just some of the facts about our security officers, and they're all contained there in the slides, but these individuals are experienced professionals, and all of them have served in some form of law enforcement prior to coming here to Newington. So with that, they bring a lot of experience, a lot of interpersonal skills, a lot of passion for the line of work that they're doing. They live here in town, they're invested in the community, they really care about their school and what they do. So some of the things that they're doing on a daily basis here, and I'm not going to go through all of them, they're right there on the slides, but you can just see how well-rounded these people are, and what an integral part of their school they've become, and how much their schools have come to rely upon, all the different skill sets they have, and the different ways that they can come in and help on a daily basis. If we could advance the slide, please, Dr. Brummet? Thank you. All right, so staffing for our security is something I want to spend a little bit of time on. And so back in July of 2020, I was fortunate enough to be offered the position here with the Newington Public Schools, started working with Dr. Brummet, and one of the things that she asked me to do from the very beginning, "Mike, take a look, look around, evaluate our program as it stands, evaluate our procedures, evaluate our staffing, evaluate our buildings physically, and report back to me." So as I did that, one of the things that jumped out at me was that we were staffed with two security officers at Newington High School, and that was good. We were staffed with one security officer for each middle school, and that was good, but we were also sharing that middle school security officer with the two elementary schools that were in that district. So what that meant was, there was no way we had a security officer in every building at all times that school was in session. It wasn't possible to have a security there at every arrival and dismissal time, every day, every building. There wasn't, it wasn't possible to have a security officer physically there to respond for an emergency, physically visible for anyone who may come onto the property and want to do wrong. So one of the things that Dr. Brummet and I worked on was, let's get some more security officers. Let's make sure that we staff each building with a specific security officer, and they really can become a part of that school community, get to know the staff, get to know the students, get to know the families, earn that trust. And when we did that, I will say we were very pleasantly surprised. We had a great pool of applicants apply. We were able to select some very talented, very committed, very capable individuals, and they came into those schools, and I think in the very beginning, it was sort of a learning curve. They were wondering, okay, well, how exactly do I fit here? And I think the principals were wondering, well, how does this new person, what is their role, what are they going to do? And so watching that and working with them on that process, it was really cool, to be honest with you, it was exciting, because you watched that relationship grow, and you watched the principal and the security officer and the staff and the students, and then the parents, and you see this relationship form and this level of trust and this bond and this reliance, and now it's this incredible partnership that we see every day. You see examples of it, you've heard examples of it, we had a recent presentation, right, about Dan Veleca City Green, I believe Jim Marciano talked about Dan's creation of, you know, your typical school safety patrol, and that's just one example. That's all Dan. No one told him to do that. He came up with it, he started it, he's passionate about it, and that's just an example of the commitment that these individuals have to our schools, to their buildings and those communities. Advance the slide, please. Okay, access control. So we want to tell, we know we have a security officer there, they're visible, we have a vehicle. It's very important for everybody to understand that the access control in our buildings is a combination of your traditional key locks, but we have over 150 electronic card readers in the district, and they're run by a software program that allows us to control the locking status of doors remotely, district-wide, and allows us to lock down buildings or the entire district in an emergency electronically, remotely if needed. And what's also important to understand is that in our school buildings, every single one of them, all doors are locked at all times while school is in session. There is not an unlocked door you can walk in. They are locked, and that is by policy, every single door for the duration of a school day, every single building, and that is something that we take very, very seriously. Access to our buildings and lack thereof for anyone that doesn't belong in our buildings is paramount, and we take that very seriously as a security staff district-wide, as an administrative staff district-wide. It's not just the security officers, it's the principals, it's the staff members. Everyone is on board, everyone understands this, and everyone plays their role in that process, very important. So when we talk about card readers, below that, I mentioned this quickly, is a lockdown function with our panic buttons. So we have panic buttons that are strategically placed throughout all of our school buildings, and the way that those panic buttons work is that if a staff member senses any sort of danger, hears something that sounds like an emergency, sees something, someone irate shows up trying to gain entrance, entry into a building, any type of a disturbance, they can activate that panic button. And what that panic button does, it electronically locks down all of our card readers. All right, so that's going to lock all of our doors, and I know that they're already locked, but when I say lockdown, if there's an emergency in that building, what if there's a district-wide staff member who unknowingly just wanders in and fobs their way into an unsafe building? So what that lockdown function does is it disables their ability to accidentally walk into an unsafe scenario. It also knows the difference between a staff member and a security staff member or a law enforcement officer, their fobs override that function. So we don't bring anyone that might be in an unsafe situation, but we do bring the people that we need to be able to get into building at that time, all electronically, all through the program, all the computer program S2. If for some reason that fails, that will always fail locked. So if we have a power outage, for example, if we have some sort of an internet outage or the software program goes down, all those readers will fail locked, so our building is still locked, our building is still secure. We can override that with metal keys, your traditional keys, and our first responders have the ability to fob in, they have the ability to key in. So we design the systems that we know the building is locked and secure, but that our emergency responders can always get in when they need to get in, that's very important to us. So if we could advance the slide, please? Thank you. Our surveillance cameras, so you can see, we have a significant number of surveillance cameras district-wide, so we do have the ability to see and the ability to monitor in real time if needed, the ability to go back and review something that may have happened in one of our buildings for investigative purposes. So we do have some excellent technology, and all of our cameras district-wide are all managed by one software system so that there's that consistency, so you can pull up any building, anytime, any camera. And something that's also important to understand about the surveillance cameras, and then I just want to circle back quickly about our panic buttons. In the event of an emergency, the Police Department Dispatch Center can pull up all of our surveillance cameras in our buildings. So if they get the report of an emergency to a school, an active scenario, our dispatchers can monitor what they see on those cameras and report that information in real time to our responding officers that are coming to our school building. And that type of information, while you're responding as a law enforcement officer, is incredibly important. On that same note, along with the panic buttons, forgot to add this, we also have strategically-placed audio monitors throughout our buildings. When you push a panic button, those audio monitors come on, our security vendor, Sonatrol, can listen in and hear what's going on and where, and then they report that information in real time to our police dispatch. So they're getting that information, they're getting video, they're getting audio, and all of that through our partnership with our first responders here in town, that allows that effective response, that allows them to get there quicker. That allows that effective response, that allows them to get there quicker with the best information they can have at the time. They know where they're going, they have an idea of what they, what they're going to face when they get there. And that is just a significant piece of technology that is, that is very important for us to have. Uh, let's go forward. Okay, emergency drills and procedures. So it's also important for the board and everyone involved to understand that we have robust procedures. Uh, with very detailed procedures in place district wide. For any type of an emergency that we would expect to encounter. Um, we have what's called an all hazards school security and safety plan. It's a hundred and seventy some odd page, um, state of Connecticut plan that is submitted to the state every single year for review. It's updated every year. Um, we look to improve it, make changes, keep current. Um, and then every year that gets submitted by statute and that's something that we do always. And in addition to doing that, I mentioned how long, that's like in a giant binder if you were to print it, right? Well, in the event of an emergency, it's not really realistic to expect somebody to flip through this huge binder. So what we do is we take this information here. What are we doing in a lockdown? What are we doing in an evacuation? What are we doing in a shelter in place? We simplify that onto a shorter document that we give to staff for a quick reference. The full plan is accessible if they want to go through that, but when you need it now, you need it fast. They can have it either on live binders, they can have it printed, they can have it on their Google Drive. Uh, we'll get into another place that they can access that shortly. Uh, but this information is available, they're, it's reviewed with staff, we train monthly in every building in the district. Um, our first responders are, are huge allies in that, our fire marshal's office, our police department, they come to these drills. They participate, they watch, they evaluate, they give pointers and suggestions. Uh, earlier this year, we did a, a full tabletop exercise um with our police department. Um, and it was just, it was to go through a mock emergency with our administrative and security staff at Newington High School. And a large group from the police department, so Chief, Chief Clark approached this thing the right way. Sometimes with these exercises, you get the command staff. And that's great, the command staff's great, but who are the people that are actually going to be responding and handling this and going into the building? So what do you do? We brought patrol officers, he brought patrol supervisors, he did, he brought command staff, he brought dispatchers. He brought pretty much every type of law enforcement person or every position that would respond to something like this. And they got to learn more about what we do in our school. And then our staff got to learn what to expect from them. And our dispatchers got to speak, well, this is the information we would like to have, and this is how we would use that to, to inform our officers. So it was just a really good learning experience for everybody involved. And that's just one example of how we're always trying to think of what can we do that we haven't done to get better. And that was something that, that we worked on, Dr. Brummett and uh, and I planned it. Chief Clark was just more than, more than happy to uh get involved and. Cut, came up with the scenario and walked the building ahead of time and then we sort of came up with what this was going to be. Um, so it was, it was definitely a positive, very positive experience for everybody involved and that's just. Just thought I'd mention that just because this is not just the schools doing their own thing. And that collaboration is such an important part of school security. And you know, we wouldn't have that without the incredible support we get from our fire department, fire marshal, police department, and EMS here in Newington, we're very fortunate. Uh, next slide, please, Dr. Brummett? Okay, this is going to be Navigate three sixty. And I mentioned this just a second ago about. Another place that uh, that staff can access our emergency plans. This was a, a software program that was brought to town uh by Dr. Brummett. And right as I came on board, this was, this was brand new. And we met and we discussed this and, and Dr. Brummett's like, here you go. Let's uh, let's incorporate this into, into our program. And so it was one of those, let's learn it. So I had to learn it myself first. Learned to work with it and then we started to roll it out to our staff members here in the district. And what you're looking at right there is what it looks like if you log on using a laptop. I need these laptops here, you could log on and look at that. And you can see what this program offers and it's got a lot of different information and a lot of different um sections to work in regarding school security. And if you see safety plans uh down in the lower left-hand corner, that is actually a template. Where Navigate three sixty, us being a customer, they preload the state of Connecticut all hazard school security and safety plan into there. So that's where I actually create the plans. And when we input the information into there, it actually generates that state of Connecticut plan for us. And it keeps them each year. So that you can reference the year before, make your updates for the following year, uh generate the final copy and send it to the state of Connecticut. Um, we have some different sections in there, uh drill logs and obviously that helps us manage schedule. Um, and report on the drills that we do in the schools. Uh, we have our maps and floor plans. So all of our buildings, now we upload our PDFs of all of our um evacuation routes, our floor plans. Um, aerial overviews of our properties and now you can find that all in one place. So if you were to log into Navigate, choose your school, pull up your maps and floor plans and there they are. And that's an important thing too, when you need them quickly and you need them in one place, it's great to have that right there in Navigate. And what we'll do now, Dr. Brummett, if we could go forward, we'll talk about Respond. And we can just skip through that, that's sort of a. Something in there, make it look nice. Uh, so this is, uh, this is Respond. And now what you're looking at, you can tell you're looking at a cell phone. And so along with Navigate three sixty comes a mobile app for all of our staff members here in the district. And also for um our first responders. So our fire marshal's office, who has been just, they've been very involved, especially this year. Um, with helping us um with emergency planning and emergency operations. Um, they now are on here through us as first responders. Um, and if you go to the Respond function on there, that is what's going to help us manage. Um, an emergency that might occur in one of our buildings. So what you can do is, it just says Elizabeth Green up there, but the first thing you would do is pick your building. And then it opens up to that building. If we could just advance, uh, Dr. Brummett, it'll, it'll show a little bit more of what it'll do. So. And I know that uh some of you in the room, I know Craig Holland back there from IT, he's received some of these alerts, uh, Dr. Brummett, you certainly. Um, so this is how you would evac, uh, uh, activate an emergency and anybody can do this. So you would go into the app and you'd activate what type of an emergency we have in the building. And when you push activate alarm, what that does is it sends a, a audible and a, and a visual um push notification. To staff members phones. So if you don't want it to make any noise because you're just training, you would do training. And if you accidentally select drill or intentionally select drill regardless, it's going to send off those notifications, it sends emails. And you know, so we've had that happen and all of a sudden, you know, Dr. Brum, hey, what's, is everything alright, you know, in the beginning. And now I think she knows to expect it because it's happening monthly. But in the very beginning, it sounds like a fire truck siren, it's like a loud um notification, it definitely draws your attention. And you know, that is the reason that it's set up that way in drill is because you want to train as realistically as possible, right? So we use drill setting when we have a drill in a building, so it does make the alarm, it does send the push notification, the emails and let staff know. So it's one more way, is that our only way to communicate? Of course not. But if we have multiple ways to communicate. We're that much more likely to reach all the stakeholders we need to reach. And you know, we've, Craig from IT is, is a district person, so he's, he's very in tune with this and he'll respond. And it gives you the opportunity to say, hey, I'm okay, I'm not okay, I'm not here. And, and we'll, we'll talk about that some more a little bit. Right Craig, you accidentally hit the uh, he hit, I'm not okay one time by accident. And you know what? That's great because that comes up on my phone, Craig, we'll call him right away. You alright? He's like, what are you talking about? I said, you hit, you hit not okay. He's like, oh my God, that's so cool. I did that by mistake, but thanks for calling. So it's one of those things where like, if he really wasn't okay. We try to reach Craig and we'd have the ability to communicate with him, be like, where are you and what's happening? What do you need? And that's just something that we didn't have before as, as a capability and Navigate offers us that. So if we could advance the slide, Dr. Brummett, please? Thank you. And there's a screen I'm talking about right there, that okay, I'm not okay or I'm not here. And that's important because what we're going to get into now is how Navigate then allows us to account for staff and students in a building. And this, this management screen on the, uh, all the way on the right-hand side here is what you would see um as an administrator. Um, as a security officer. And you can see that this one happened to be activated for Newington High School. And it gets the numbers and all of the class lists and all of that, this syncs with Power School every night. So any changes that have been made in Power School, anything Power School knows, Navigate knows, that's how we describe it. So at that point, there were twelve hundred and seventy kids that were not accounted for and fourteen had been accounted for so far. So fourteen kids had been checked off at the time of that screenshot. And what that does is as teachers, they only see their own class that they're responsible for accounting for. So it's a much, it's a much smaller, cleaner screen for them. And they go through and they check off who they have. And when they send submit, that tells us who that, who's accounted for and who we may be looking for. Now with that being said, if, let's say that a teacher had a, a student go out to use the bathroom or go to the nurse or something like that. And that student's now not accounted for. Well, if another staff member says, hey, come with me. That staff member can account for that student by adding that student to their class. And then that teacher that's supposed to have that student is notified that they have been accounted for and which teacher has them. So it's a really good way for us to, to think about, you know, in a school that size especially, when you're trying to account for that many people. Um, it's, it's certainly very helpful to have this technology. Um, you know, obviously we still have our old paper attendance sheets and all of that as a backup. If our cell service and internet is down, if something malfunctions, um, we do plan for that, so it's not like we're a hundred percent relying on this. Um, we always go back to paper if the technology fails and we still have a backup way to do that if we need to. If we could advance the slide, please? Alright, that's just an example of what a uh, what a teacher's screen might look like. So depending on what, what time of day it is, depending on what class um they're teaching at the time. They select that class and whoever Power School has assigned to that class shows up and they go through the accounting process. Next slide, please? Okay, so that just shows, once you, once you account for your class, you would submit your class and then it pops up and it changes the numbers on that screen. Next slide, please? Okay, so flip charts. And this again is a picture of the, of a staff member's cell phone. So the idea here is to try to, try to make our, our plans and our emergency procedures as accessible. As possible to all of our staff members. Um, and again, through training, through reviewing, through repetition. Uh, they know, they know the basics, they know what they need to do, they do a phenomenal job. Our staff is uh, is, is just an awesome group. And, but what if they forget some of the details? And they're like, oh my God, what, what's my secondary evacuation, where am I supposed to go? They could pop open their flip charts on that app. And this is all specific language, specific to their school, specific to the type of emergency we're responding to. And it tells them what to do, where to go. It's a reference. Um, we hope they don't need it, but if, again, if they forget, if they're, for whatever, they're new to the building. Um, any number of reasons why it might be nice to have this right in your pocket. And right on that mobile app. And that's just one more way for our staff to always know what their emergency procedures are and I have it available to them. Next slide? Okay, so visitor management, and this is one of the uh, the improvements that we've made district wide. Um, beginning this school year. So we started the implementation process this spring. We're going to be finishing the implementation process in the fall. And again, in the interest of improving our services and the interest of, of looking at how we can get better. Our visitor management system is one of them. So we were up until this year going with the current or the current, the traditional uh visitor management where you're signing in. On a pad of paper, um, you're being given a, a generic visitor lanyard. And we did that separately in every one of our school buildings. So that's fine, it doesn't work, yes. Um, but again, communicating with other districts and understanding what, what other types of technology are out there, um, there was a better way to do that. And we bought a computerized visitor management workstation uh for every building in our district. And we started implementing those this spring. And what that does is. It gives us a more robust way to vet visitors before they're allowed into one of our school buildings. And it also allows us to see at any given time through logging into the management site, who's in what building, how many visitors. Uh, how long have they been there, where are they going, who are they seeing on the backend? But upfront, what it also does is it changes those generic um visitor lanyards. Now it's a photo similar to like you might see at a hospital, it's a photo of the person, it's their name. It's the date, hopefully it's the same date, right? You want to make sure they belong there. Who are they, who are they visiting and what the date is and what's their picture? So process wise, a visitor comes into our building. And we're going to get into this in a minute, but we have started, as you know. Outfitting all of our school buildings with intruder resistant vestibules at all the main entrances. And this works in synergy with our visitor management system. So uh, let's use Martin Kellogg, for example. Who's been to Martin Kellogg lately? Okay, so if you go to Martin Kellogg, the way that this works is you go up to the main entrance and you ring the doorbell. And when you ring that doorbell, you, there's going to be a camera right on your face. And they can see you in the main office, they can communicate with you verbally from the main office. And they ask your name, your business and so forth. So if they make the decision that you're going to be led into the building or at least into the vestibule, they will release that first door. You come into the vestibule. And then at that point, if you're just dropping off your student's Chromebook or picking up something. That all happens in the vestibule. And so we're minimizing the non-staff members that are coming into our building. If they need to come in, fine. If they don't, they stay in the vestibule and they leave. If they need to come into the building, then that's where the visitor management program comes into play. So now you're going to present a state ID or a driver's license. That state ID or driver's license gets scanned by the system. And it runs that person through a nationwide sex offender database. So does your information uh match or come close to matching anybody on a sex offender registry in all fifty states? If it does, then the user is notified with the actual registry um bulletin. So it'll have description, photograph, um, all the demographics of the person. And they can make a decision, is this the same person or is it not? If it's not, they can bypass it. If it is, then we have procedures in place to deal with that administratively. And once, once the process continues, that photograph that visitor is taken right by the system. The one you stick on ID is generated, once they're badged, then the second set of doors is released and they're allowed into the building. Now, something important to understand about those vestibules is that the way that they're constructed is they're constructed with uh some, some very robust materials. Uh, the glass is a specially designed glass. Um, so that an individual is not able to break their way through it and force their way into one of our buildings. Um, it creates a significant delay. Or it's impossible, pretty much. It's some very, it's a very substantial product that we've started to use in all of these vestibules. And what that allows us is it either completely keeps the person out or the person would have to spend so much time trying to get in. It would allow more than adequate time for a significant law enforcement response to come there and take care of that. Um, so that's, that's how those work by design. Um, they are, we are moving through the district at this point. We have, um, our last two schools are slated to be completed this summer over break. And then obviously the, the Anna Reynolds renovation will include um the same technology and the same level of security at that main entrance vestibule. Uh, let's move forward. Okay, so that's, I kind of like talked about this already, but the, the company is called Scholarship, that's our vendor that uh, that makes the system. There is a photo of what that kiosk looks like as well, if we skip there and that's what it looks like. So the operator, the screen faces the operator, down in the right-hand corner, that red square, that's actually the license scanner. And then you can see a webcam and a uh, a printer are mounted on the top of it and that's a uh, the whole contained unit right there. It's on wheels in case we need to relocate it. Um, and it connects to our wireless network and uh, it's so far we've had, we've had very good luck, learning curve like anything new. And uh, but again, there's a reason for it and it's because we're getting better and it's because we're making our schools safer and we're controlling our visitors. Um, in a more, in a more efficient way. And we can skip to the next slide. Okay, we're going to change gears um just a little bit. And then of course, any questions or anything else you'd like me to cover? We can go back to that, but this is just to wrap it up. Um, as the board knows, the, one of the other parts of this role is to do residency. Alright, so we do have um, you know, a number of residency issues that come up throughout the years, uh, throughout the year and any school year. And so we investigate those residency cases and a lot of times we'll get um information from uh bus drivers. Um, school, school staff. Um, you know, people that say, you know, I, I don't think this, this family is actually living in Newington. Uh, and, and by law, um, you know, you have to live here to attend school here. Um, I mean, there are ways to do that if you're willing to pay tuition or if there's been an exception made by the superintendent. Um, but to put it simply, residents of Newington are entitled to, to be educated by the Newington Public School System. And you know, we have to make sure that people are actually living in town that, that attend our schools. And when they're not, um, and when investigation shows that they're not, there is a process, um, you know, where Dr. Brummett and I go through and. And if they're found to not be living in Newington, uh, they are, they are disenrolled. Um, of course, they are entitled to uh, to a hearing and there's a bunch of steps that uh, that have taken place. Um, and we've done a couple of those this year um already. But uh, at any given time, there are multiple open cases. And some of those cases run for more than one school year, depending on, you know, how the investigation goes, what kind of information is available. Um, so those are uh, those are, are very lengthy a lot of times. And they can be complicated, they're, they involve a lot of physical surveillance and uh, uh data research and things of that nature. And uh, actually, that's, that's one more thing that our security officers will uh, will help with from time to time, is they'll put in some extra hours. Um, doing some surveillance work, um, you know. Um, you know, outside of school hours, either early morning or after school or what have you. Uh, but they're also helpful um, to me to be able to try to run multiple cases at one time or to be in one, be the, be in more than one location at one time. I mean, need multiple people to do that. So they have uh, they've been very helpful and uh, proven to be an asset in that area as well. Okay, so I believe that's our last slide, Dr. Brummett. I think I covered what's uh, what's there. Maybe there's one more. Yeah. Okay, I think I kind of talked about what's in all those slides. If anybody has any questions or anything certainly asks, um, I'm happy to have it to answer that or go into more detail. Uh, but at this point, I think I'd like to, number one, just uh, wrap it up with saying, um, you know, this is a huge responsibility to be in this role and an absolute honor to serve the district in this way. Um, school security and the safety of our families, uh, students, uh, it's, it's at the forefront. It always is, even not just when we're in the wake of a tragedy. Um, this is something that our team is incredibly committed to. I know that Dr. Brummett and her staff, um, I know that our Board of Education is uh, is committed to this as well. So I thank you and you know, and I can assure our families. Um, this is, this is priority number one. And we are constantly vigilant. And we are doing absolutely everything we can in conjunction with the Newington Police Department um, to work together to keep all of our schools, students, staff, families safe. And you know, that's why I'm here tonight. And again, just thank you everyone here for your support. And please, any questions, um, let's go. I'd love to elaborate on anything and and uh, go into more detail if you'd like. So I think we're ready.
Jessica Weaver?
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you so much. It's um, difficult that this has to be. Um, but like we said, I think the timing uh, couldn't be any more prudent on this. So uh, just a few questions, um, and I want to thank you for just the in-depth, the breadth and the depth of that. Um, so you kind of already answered one of my questions, I guess, relying on technology is a good thing and a bad thing, right? Uh, I think we live in a age of fear of cyber attacks, but also, you know, how, where we balance that. So um, if you could just elaborate a little more, I know we got the paper for the drills, but um, kind of when technology fails or if we are, does it put us at risk in terms of uh, privacy information, given a cyber attack? I know that's likely through our vendors and the companies, but just kind of how that works.
Sure, yeah. And really, if if anything goes down, so we have no internet, we have no cell service. Um, like I mentioned before, our buildings are still going to be locked and that's good. So we're going to be able to use our metal keys, right? So that's no technology. We're going to be able to resort back to pen, paper, um, printed binders, printed copies of our emergency plans. Um, we have our two-way radios. What if those go down? All right, so now we're cell phones. What if cell phones go down? Um, our schools have bullhorns, battery operated bullhorns. If we need to communicate over bullhorns um, to people at evacuation points, um, if we need to send messengers physically. Um, but our actual emergency procedures and what we need to do to keep the students safe, that doesn't rely on technology. We're still going to be able to lock our buildings. We're still going to be able to lock down our classrooms. We're still going to be able to evacuate our buildings and relocate if we need to. And you know, to your point, these are things that we're always thinking about. What would we do? We lose this option, what's our other option? And these are things that we talk about. These are things that are included in some of our plans. Um, you know, our secondary evacuation sites, um, our relocation areas, if we have some reason why we can't go back into the building. Where do we go? How do we facilitate that? All of these things are built, um, I guess that redundancy is built into these plans um, so that people understand what are we doing next. And it's always, it's always important to try to be one step ahead and to plan for what you might not have planned for.
Perfect, thanks. And I guess follow up to on um, I think we, we recently heard that a student got a grant for lunch tables outside. Um, so with that nicer weather and obviously with the pandemic, outside classrooms is more of a thing. Uh, notice in, in the past couple of years, we have like that kind of more freedom for the high schoolers for campus. Um, how are we dealing with more kids outside? And I know there's been like, you know, Cadillac converter things in our high school parking lots and stuff like that. Kind of with the students more spread out between the inside and the outside. As it's been with gym classes too, how are we um, kind of anticipating those types of situations?
Awesome question, because I should, and I, I thought this too. So thank you, thank you for picking that up. So we'll start at Newington High School, because I think that's sort of where you're focused, but. Um, so to start with the, the, the outside activity. So one of the challenges that we, we faced um, district wide, especially during the pandemic, were all the mask breaks. And so we were trying to balance um, safety and security physically versus the safety and security regarding the pandemic and the need for mask breaks and the need to use outdoor space. Um, so we were as vigilant as we could be. We were on top of everything as much as we could be. Um, when the patio, um, and even the tent, remember the tent at Newington High School? When that was set up, the rule was if that was open or people were outside in the tent, um, at the lunch periods. Now, when you're talking about large groups, we had to have one of the security officers stationed out there. All right, they had to be physically out there. I just, you have, you have to. Even now, the tent's not there, but the lunch patio is. If they're using the patio, um, the, the cafeteria deployment involves both security officers at that time, the inside. Um, the SRO is in a different location, but close by, one of those security officers has to be on that patio. And if for some reason there's an emergency or something pulls them away, um, you know, will that happen? Could that happen? Yes. Um, but as long as we can stick with what we're supposed to be doing by, by plan, there's always one of them out there. Um, so to answer another part of your question is that we, due to the catalytic converter thefts, due to students, um, you know, coming and going, um, there was a program in place and there still is for the rest of the school year where parents can sign a permission slip. Um, older students can leave uh, during lunch period and come back. Okay, so how do we, how do we supervise that? How do we provide security for that? So again, I approached Dr. Brummett on this and, and you know, basically it was, it was a concern. It was something that I thought we needed to, to do a little better with. Um, we've got thefts, we've got students, we have the potential combination of someone there to commit a crime encountering our students in the parking lot. Now, that's concerning, very concerning. So thank you to Dr. Brummett. Um, you know, our suggestion was can we add an exterior security person? Um, can we create a new position? Um, not right now. And that was her answer. So we, we, we said, but we can pay hourly for someone to be out there. And you know what? It's worked out unbelievably. We, we've, we actually, true story. Um, the very night that Dr. Brummett said, can you find somebody? I said, I'm going to work on it. A friend of a friend told me that someone that I know, that I didn't know this happened, just retired from the state police the day before, was looking for work in a school. Are you kidding me? So reached out to that person. We have him in there now. He's worked out unbelievable. And he is in a marked car, orange lights going, perhaps you've seen him. And he is outside patrolling our exterior property at all times during the school day. And if it's not him, he needs to come inside for a reason, needs a break, wants a switch, then one of our inside security officers goes out there and covers for him. So we're now providing that additional level of coverage um, for the outside uh, properties of Newington High School. Um, you know, for those reasons that we mentioned, the catalytic converter thefts, um, students coming and going, students that maybe shouldn't be out there uh, or that may find themselves getting the trouble out there. Um, he's out there to address all those issues and he, he's been a phenomenal addition um, for this spring season.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks for reminding. I don't know. I, I guess the pressure of being up here, I forgot that, but he's, he's been, he's been, he's been fantastic. So again, just uh, you know, another example, I think, of the support that, that we've gotten from, from our administrative staff and our superintendents and so thank you so much for, for that. But great question.
All right, online, Sam Sharma?
Hey, um, thank, thank you for the presentation. I got a quick question. So how many schools, um, do, how many schools have a vestibule and then also the VMS system out of all the schools?
So uh, we'll start with the VMS system. So we've purchased the VMS systems for all the schools. We already have them here on site. And so that they were bought this year. Uh, they are currently implemented at Newington High School, which has a vestibule. Martin Kellogg vestibule, John Wallace with a vestibule and E. Green with a vestibule. And that's where we have those uh, vestibules are fully operational, visitor management systems are fully operational. And we actually met onsite at Patterson and Chafee uh, earlier this afternoon uh, to review the finalized plans for the uh, the construction of the vestibules at those two schools over the summer. So our goal is to have those operational by the time school starts.
All right, uh, wonderful. And also like, another question, so you have, you have one skip, I think you have two, two at the high school and then one at each of the other schools, right? So is, you think that's enough or is that enough for like, just one person for, you know, each school? Or you think we might need more like, because high school's got two?
I would start with the high school and I would say that having the experience of, of our third security officer at the high school, it's made a difference. And I think if we were able to keep a third at the high school, would allow us to address anything going on inside without having to give up anything or the ability to address what's going on outside at the same time. Uh, before we had the third person, if we were, if we were focusing on the outside, we were giving up a little bit on the inside. So if we had the ability to keep that third uh, person to address the exterior, um, number one, having that car physically patrolling that property with the lights going and a uniformed security officer all the time. Um, not only is it very effective, um, but let's consider the deterrent um, value of that as well. So you can see it now anywhere going by on Willard Avenue, going by on Veterans. Um, am I going to pull into this parking lot and try to do something or am I going to move on? And uh, you know, we have found that that uh, that's a very good feeling and I think staff and I think students and, and um, quick story, if you don't mind, from this morning, we had the big event, um, the, the scholar's breakfast at Newington High School. And as part of um, as part of our response to the tragedy in Texas, um, I'd called a staff meeting with uh, all of our security staff district wide to, to discuss this and to just discuss thoughts, feelings and sort of the mission for the day, what we wanted them to do in their own school communities. And we couldn't have the high school officer or high school security officers at that meeting at the same time because they were working the event in a gymnasium. True story, while we're live on our, on our Google Meet, our officer in the parking lot was tuned in on his phone because he didn't want to give up his position in the parking lot because that was so important. And he's on his phone, he's live on the meeting and we really, we had a parent leaving the high school, come right up to his car, lean into his window and start thanking him for being there. And how safe, how much safer they feel by seeing the visible security and that happened in our meeting. We're like, oh, the timing is unbelievable. But these, there's, there's a lot of stories like this where, where our families, our parents, um, you know, they appreciate it and they do give us that feedback. So moving on from the high school, um, I think one security officer at the elementary schools is, has, has been great. Um, so the goal there, because they were added, right? The goal is to be able to keep those, those security officers at our elementary schools. And that, that is, I will tell you, priority number one in terms of our staffing. Um, it's so important. They are so instrumental to, to the entire security program and the school community that being able to keep them is, is definitely, uh, definitely at the forefront. And moving forward, if we wanted to improve um, through personnel, we would add a second at the middle schools. Our middle schools are uh, are getting busier and busier. And again, our middle schools do have, um, you know, outside activity, um, inside activity. And just through interaction with those security officers and, and the staff there, um, there are plenty of incidents where if we were looking to build, uh, I would, I would add one um, at each middle school.
No, thanks a lot. I mean, I, I love the idea of, I mean, the VMS and also the vestibule because you want to minimize like folks who are not like staff members like from coming into the building. So, you know, I think maybe like our goal should be like, as a district is like minimize folks who want to come in unless it's like, unless they really need to be in, so they should just come to the vestib, come to the vestibule, get scanned, do the VMS. Um, you know, if they need to drop something off, drop something off and you know, and just minimize folks who want to come in. So you know, um, I think that's, that's like something that's really, really important, you know? So I, I love the idea of the, the VMS and also the vestibule. Thanks.
Thank you for the feedback. Appreciate it.
Okay, Danielle Droes?
Thank you um, for everything that you do to keep our students safe. Um, as an educator, I, I do appreciate all the security in my district and I'm sure everyone appreciates it and respects it in Newington. I actually have a question now about security. Can I um, just ask you? When I was on the board previously, we had quite a few hearings about the non-residents and there's none that have come across the table. So can I assume that it's because you're finding people and they're just leaving peacefully or is it becoming harder? Is there anything we can do to help that? Because every time we have someone here who's at a district, they're obviously taking resources from our own students.
That's a great question. Thank you. So the answer is a little, a little bit of both, actually. So earlier this school year, we did have, we did have one case that went uh, to a formal hearing with a, with a um, arbitrator. And we just recently had one where it went to an informal uh, hearing with just uh, the parent and Dr. Brummett and I. And that one, we were able to work out and uh, came to a resolution. Uh, but the first one was uh, was, was quite a lengthy and substantial process um, on that one. And you know, but for the most part, uh, we have found that when the case is complete and we have the informal meeting, um, in most cases, the, the parent will decide to, to withdraw and accept the finding. Um, but again, if they do, if they do choose to challenge it, um, you know, a lot of times they'll, they'll maybe challenge it to the first level um, being the meeting with Dr. Brummett. But uh, the full hearing, we did one of those so far this year. And uh, that one was pretty substantial, but uh, much past that, a lot of times we're able to resolve them. Uh, but if there's one thing looking at the future, um, and then again, um, you know, as important as residency is from a financial standpoint, um, you know, understanding there's, there's only so many resources that, that can be given and I understand that, but I guess if someone asks and if there's anything I could, I could, I could add, um, you know, to make it more effective down the road, it would be just the ability to either continue to, to pay some extra time for the, the additional surveillance work. Um, you know, again, allowing us to address multiple cases at once. And uh, you know, the more, the more sets of eyes you can have out there, if we had, you know, another dedicated person who did just that, uh, that would allow us to address more cases, be more effective. Um, but you know what? We're, we're building things um, one step at a time and just, just being able to, to add the additional hours and, and you know, and I thank again our superintendents for their support on that. Um, you know, being able to do that this year has been helpful and, you know, we're always getting better. Every year we look to see how we can get better and, you know, this won't be the first time I'm sure that we talk about this and, and uh, but uh, you know, so thank you for that question, but that's where we're at with residency.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, Amy Pirati?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I want to say thank you for this presentation. It was very informative. Um, you know, I, I've been at Martin Kellogg, I've been scanned in my picture. It's not a great picture, so, um, but um, but yeah, I, I have a daughter at Kellogg and at Anna Reynolds and, you know, even though the, that Anna Reynolds time will come eventually for the, this whole security system and the vestibule and everything, um, I know that she's safe. I know that. Just thank you.
And thank you for that. And, and you know what? It's, that's what it's all about. So we have our security and safety committees at all of our buildings and when we meet with, we meet with that group, if there's a parent that attends that meeting, the most important feedback is how do you feel as a parent dropping your child off with us? Well, I mean, let's think about it. Who's a parent in here? We all drop our kids off, right? You gotta feel like your child is going to be safe. You gotta feel like your district cares, right? So you feel like that? Thank you so much. That's phenomenal feedback. And anything you feel like we can ever do better, any ideas, please send them our way.
Thank you. Michael Brand?
So speaking of dropping off, I, I love how your team has been embedded into our community, not only in the schools, but also at drop off too. And, and meeting with the parents and, and sometimes the parents need a driving lesson at times, but um, your team does a great job um, of just kind of reminding them of how we drive when kids are around and how we do drop offs. Um, one clarifying question, the Wallace, so I, I was doing at Wallace and I always think about the doors and all that stuff and you know, obviously, I think that project is slated for 23, 24, I think, but I have two questions. So the first one is, as you walk around our buildings and now that you've gotten to get a lay of the land and you've gotten to put things in place to keep everybody safe and all these processes, are you seeing or are you noticing anything inside the buildings? Maybe not as drastic as Wallace with no doors for the classrooms for lockdowns or any safety measures, but are there other items that inside the buildings, excluding vestibules and Anna Reynolds, that maybe we need to look at in the future in terms of, you know, putting capital funds into trying to upgrade those buildings to be more safe?
Really, at this point, would uh, you know, John Wallace is, is really the one that, you know, that jumps out at us. And really, the way that it's designed now, we've, we've done, um, and half of it or the, the most of it was in place. When I got here, we added an additional function um, this past year in terms of, you know, an automatic release if those doors were magnetically held open. Um, but we really do need to, to, you know, strongly consider putting the funding into that because if that single point were to be defeated or not activated quick enough, um, you know, there really isn't anything past that. And that is a significant concern. So if we're looking at that kind of, that kind of funding, um, I would direct it that way. Um, you know, other than that, we, you know, we look at door sets. So, and the district has done an awesome job lately with that as well, where So, and the district has done an awesome job lately with that as well, where our, our maintenance department. They're going around, they're finding any door sets that are older or that the bottom metal structure is starting to rust out. And Lou and Jason have been, have been all over this and we're replacing those door sets. And those are things that, you know, they might seem small, but if one of those were to become, you know, brittle or not operate the way it was designed to operate, it could be defeated easier than it should be, right? So then being on top of those types of infrastructure issues, so important. And then just, you know, looking for additional places that we could add some more of the intruder resistant window upgrades. And I'm talking about the aftermarket, so it's not like we have to replace them necessarily. But we do have a vendor that can, can add a, an additional level of, of intruder resistant technology to. Maybe some, some additional windows or door sets that may not have it. We're, we're in good shape, but one of the things that we're going to do this summer is we're going to go around, we're going to reevaluate. All of those areas and look for again, areas like, oh, you know what? Let's redo that one or that one, that one doesn't have it, but maybe it should and look to address those things incrementally as well. So again, that's a great question because we're always looking at stuff like that as we should be. And you know, we need to maintain these buildings and upgrade them as, as needed, but. Final answer is John Wallace would be, would be my top suggestion.
And then last question with COVID and all the things, what happens when one of the SROs at elementary or the middle school are sick?
Security officers.
Yeah, like, yeah.
So I actually answered, I'll say SRO too, right? Because, so if the SRO at Newington High School, and I think we probably know this, but I should say it again. Again, our agreement with the police department, top notch. If our SRO is not going to be there for any reason, sick, vacation, training, anything. They automatically replace our SRO with another police officer. Our school never goes without an SRO. And that's, that's excellent. For a security officer, we don't have substitute security officers, so we have a coverage plan. So if one of them is not going to be there, they have agreements with one another where they overlap each other's schools. So the way that it works is if a, if a middle school officer is going to be out, they work with an elementary school officer because the time stagger. So that we make sure we can cover at least arrival dismissal. And then we can use multiple people to, you know, to do maybe a walkthrough during the day if they're available, that kind of a thing. So we're always on top of that the best we can be, but again, there's no, no dedicated like substitute system. We just use shifting a personnel to cover it the best that we can. You're welcome.
Okay, next I'm going to go to Richard Laverrier, then we'll come back to you, Sam.
Uh, thank, thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I do wholeheartedly support having. Two officers at the middle school. I think that is something that, that we can't put a price tag on. Our kids, we can put a price tag on a parking lot, but we can't put a price tag on our kids. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Sharma.
I just, I forgot to ask, just a quick question. What's, what's the policy right now? Like if somebody comes to a school. And you know, they come in with a bag or like, I mean, if it's a backpack for his kid, that's fine, but. What if someone shows up with like any kind of bag or something, backpack? What's the policy in terms of like, they just go into the vestibule, but. In terms of like what, you know, do we have a policy where, you know, you cannot, I mean, just stay in the vestibule, like do not go in or what's, you know, how do you handle that?
Are you referring to a visitor?
Yes.
So that would be evaluated on a case by case basis. So if we had a, you know, a vendor, for example, that came in with like an equipment bag. You know, that would be allowed as long, as long as it was a known and vetted vendor. But again, the other side of that is if it was someone that was there and coming into the building for a legitimate reason. We'd have to evaluate that. Is there something about that bag or something about that backpack that? That raises suspicion? Is there something that we need to look into further or are we not concerned with it? There's no set policy saying yes or no in terms of a visitor having a bag. But that's just something that would be evaluated, you know, in the moment and on a case by case basis. So, and again, if there was no reason for the person to come in the building. Or we felt uncomfortable for one reason or another with the person coming in the building, they would remain in the vestibule and we'd look into it further.
So, so, so legally, I mean, if someone's in the vestibule, he's got like a, I don't know, a bag, right? And looks like something is, you know, could be fishy. So. When that person is in the vestibule, we can legally like have him open the bag, we can check out, check the bag out, right? And then. And he stays in the vestibule.
If we were, we wouldn't necessarily search someone's bag. If we were concerned that there could be something dangerous or hazardous in there, we would contact the police. We, we wouldn't let them into the building regardless. So they wouldn't get through the second set of doors in the vestibule. They would either stay in the vestibule and the police would come and look into it further. Or if they chose, they would leave the vestibule in the property. And we would notify the police and the police could locate them, you know, on a public road or whatever and deal with that. But there's no mandatory bag search or anything like that in place to get into one of our school buildings.
Yeah, but so I think, I mean, at that point, what you would do is have that person stay in the vestibule, like call the, you know, call the local police and have them handle it. So that, that, you know, that makes sense.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you so much for the time.
I got a 10 second question for you.
Okay.
When you do a lockdown in a building, does it automatically release all the fire doors so everything is closed?
So if we push a panic button, it does.
It does.
Yeah. So, and it also releases those John Wallace wing doors. So this year we added the magnetic holders. So instead of, instead of putting a physical, like a door chalk in there. Cause then somebody has to physically remove that. If they need to have those open, now they're electronically held. And then the deactivation of that panic button releases them, they closed into the locked position. That's how that works.
All right. Very good. All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. And if anybody thinks of anything afterwards, please reach out. Okay. Good night. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so. We are now going to be moving on to agenda item F, which is our new business. And item number one is the discussion and possible action of the budget for 2022, 2023. I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Brum.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fletcher. This is. A memo that was shared a few weeks ago, though it has had some modifications and it was also. Followed up with some board questions in between our last meeting, which I did answer and share out with the entire board. So I'm hoping that there has been some clarity around these budget issues, but in short. The, the questions were with the 3.63% budget increase. What kind of offsets were used? And this represents our grant offsets. And again, if, if we didn't have the grant offsets, our ask would be higher, but these grants keep our ask lower. So we have $4.3 million in grant offsets and the planned usage of $1.1 million in non-lapsing fund. The challenger that the discussion for the board this evening is. We now have to reconcile our budget in light of the reduction that the town council implemented at 2.46. And the recommendation that we continue to make is utilization of the non-lapsing fund. I, I do want to state though, that as we did this year, if we have. Other line items that allow us to not access the non-lapsing monies, then we will not access it. We just have to have that as the plan going in. And then if. You know, grant money comes in or expenses are lower than anticipated, we would real, real rely less on the non-lapsing money, but that. Is we do have to have a plan to reconcile our budget to 78,660,124 or 2.46. And the board is aware that the MOU was signed. So really we're just at the point now where we need to reconcile the. The 200, 700 or 800,000 dollars in reconciliation. So I will turn that over to the board and I just want to remind the board that you had asked us if the open choice grant money. Were to come in and it did, it hasn't come in yet, but it is projected that we would replace the library science teacher. So that is $100,000. Already going to be charged against that money coming in from open choice. And we are also experiencing, and we just got one today. Folks coming in at the last minute with their retirement increment planning, which means they're entitled to incremental monies over the next three years. If we get those requests after the budget's developed, we have to find that money somewhere. It's part of the contract. So we have had an uptick in those folks that are going to be entitled to increment in the coming three years, especially next year. So the shortfall we have is 894,732. I know some folks were worried about, well, why are we mentioning? Only teacher salary lines? These are just placeholders. So we are showing you where we would use the non-lapsings and offset. It is in no way meant to reflect that these line items are less valuable than other line items. They're simply. The largest line items. So they were the easiest to attach these reductions to. It's not a value judgment. It's simply a bookkeeping. Ease of bookkeeping. So I'll turn it back over to Dr. Fletcher for board discussion.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Brum. Danielle Droste, you have the floor.
So I understand that the situation we're in and I do appreciate Dr. Brum, all of your responses. I know I was frustrating you. I could tell. But I just needed it in my terms so that I could understand it. So one of the things that at the last meeting I had questioned was. Kind of not being aware of, of this 894,000 part of this taking out of the. The non-lapsing fund and you absolutely had it in your budget. And my confusion as I look back on other ones were. The use of parentheses. So that's why I needed to have it so specific when I asked those questions. But as I was looking at the reconciliation page that you sent out with this and I, I don't know, Steve Freese, close your ears. My question is, is can we at least cut something from the other salaries fund? It always seems to have a big surplus at the end of the year. So, you know, take some from the non-lapsing fund if we need to, but reduce in there. Is that something where we, you know, we could do at this point? Or no, I, I don't know what the procedure is. So I did skim through that entire book again. But like not even skim, like I went through every line item again, and just that's one of the salaries or one of the line items that I just felt. Still seems a little like there might be some flexibility in it.
I can start, but it probably would be a better question for Mr. Freese here, Mr. Jakomowitz. I believe we did reduce all of our salary lines as deeply as we could without reducing staff. We did get to that point. At one of our later budget discussions, Mr. Freese or Ms. Jakomowitz, would you like to comment?
I would love for you to bring it home. So the one thing I'll say, just as an observation of what's currently happening right now, and I know Dr. Brum had shared. We are seeing a number of staff lately put in their three-year notification, which does come out of that line initially. So. Cause we have to pay that advancement. So those monies are, are needing to be, you know, considered and allocated for. As well as a lot of folks right now are sending in their transcripts for salary advancement on the salary schedule. Which is also something that comes in through that other salaries budget line. I'm seeing more this year of both of those. Than I've seen in, in the recent past. I don't know what the implications exactly will be. Of those on that budgetary line item. So I would just caution or be concerned that as those continue to, to come in. We would never want to put ourselves in a deficit in that area to not be able to manage them appropriately. Folks have all the way up until September 15th of this upcoming year to be able to put in for salary advancements. So. And then I'll let Mr. Jakomowitz finish.
From the standpoint of the comments that there appears to be money in the other salaries account. You have to recognize that because of the chronic inability to fill positions, the significant turnover levels that we've been experiencing. The vacancies translate into credits on that line in your financial statement. So if you are running three or $400,000 ahead, that's because of the inability to fully staff the district the way you want to. So to be cutting that particular line is basically cutting your lifeline to success for the staffing all around the district. If we have a bit of reversal where the job market relaxes and people are more interested in coming to work, we probably will have a. Increase in our coverage rate and being able to fill positions, keep people longer. You know, to give everybody just an illustration, today I was working on just a quick analysis for other reasons. And I was just analyzing the. Duration of employees in this paraprofessional group of all our academic support. So we had just about 200 individuals who were currently considered active that are in the system. Of that group, 31% were in their first year of employment with us. Another 25% were in. Their, really their first full year, because anybody I consider in year zero could have started last payroll. So this is really people who have zero to six months of experience of people in the one-year category or. You know, a year to year and a half maximum. So we've really become very, very thin and. In a position where the difficulties of the filling this, that, those positions. Just translate into other difficulties every day in and day out. So I could never recommend the good conscience that I would. Say, sure, cut money in this place. We're all set because, because as soon as there's an uptick or we can. Find ways to better fill those positions, those dollars will be used for daily academic support.
So the, the. Other salaries is for paraprofessionals? Because I remember it being more like if the teacher was out, it covered substitutes or. So I'm just, I'm not understanding exactly what that fund is for, what that line item was for.
Yes, that's correct. It's for the substitutes. So when we have vacancies of paraprofessionals. And we're calling in substitutes to cover them. We have 20 vacancies today and you have six people covering it. There's 14. Day rates that are not being spent that are in the other salaries account because of that. You also have the permanency of other. Situations where you're on your budget in the paraprofessional accounts because you don't have anybody at all covering a position. So if we have jobs where we're pulling people from other positions to cover those slots, just to be in legal compliance with all the IAPs. You're going to have both the savings in the paraprofessional accounts because you don't have. 150 people cover 150 jobs. You might have 120. And then you also don't have the, you're not spending the money for the substitutes because there's none to be had. So you're getting savings in two places in your budget.
So in the past, like I've, not including the, the pandemic year, because I know that that year is crazy because teachers weren't calling out sick because they were online. But like in, say the last eight years, how many, at the end of the year, how many times was that line item? Met or was it used to transfer into other funds, into other lines?
I couldn't quote you exactly year by year. By and large, we had anywhere from a small savings to a very large savings, depending on how significant the staffing issues were that we had year after year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we got Anastasia Yop first.
Hello. So this question is for Lou and Mr. Freese. I have two questions actually. I thought when we talked about early retirements in the beginning of the year, I thought early, offering early retirement would save us money. It sounds like it's going to cost us more or am I not understanding it correctly?
This is Mr. Freese. No, I, I appreciate that question. We, we have two separate things. The early retirement incentive plan that we offered, that was a, a cost saving feature that we did apply to the budget. What we're discussing this evening is in the teacher's contract, they have an opportunity to give three years advance notice. That they will be retiring in three years. And then for those three years up until retirement, they get a percentage of their salary in addition for notifying us three years early that they are going to retire. So that then becomes a cost to the program.
And my, thank you. And my other question is for Lou. So you're saying that the other salaries is only for substitutes? Does that cover, hold on. My apologies. So you're saying the other salaries account, is it only for substitutes? Or is it used? I know when teachers, like let's say they obtain, you know, a master's degree. I know they get a raise. Is that covered in that same group as well?
Yes, it is. So other salaries accounts for more than just simply substitutes. It does account for. If they do advance their degree and we have to pay them more in the contract, that it comes from that. It does take into account what I just described earlier, if they give their three years notice. And then we have to give advanced payments due to that. And then it does cover not just substitutes for, for regular teachers, but for any position that we have in the district. So we have them for. Multiple areas, custodial, you know, nursing. So, so every position that you can think of, we. Often, most, not all, but most, we do have to offer a substitute and provide that opportunity so we can fill the, the void.
And my final question is. And my final question is, so it seems like as soon as they get their degree, we have to, you know, increase their salary. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but do you think it would save us money budget-wise if they had to fulfill their contract and maybe at the end of the year it would increase? Just to help us, you know, I don't know, budget properly? Because if twenty people all of a sudden get a higher degree, then obviously we're going to be, you know... Sorry, my thing is cutting out. Like, let's say if twenty people advance that degree, then that's more money than we anticipated spending. So is that something we can figure out as well?
That's a fair question. Also, we do in advance meet with folks. I meet with every person who is in a pipeline to advance their degree, and we do work on that. So we can gain a, a general projection on when they will complete their degree to then advance the salary schedule and what that will be. We don't lock them into that, however. So some people will finish their program a little early, some people will need an extra year due to hardship, which there have been many lately. So it just depends. And so sometimes we can best project that within probably plus or minus one year. Right now happens to be a year that we just are getting a lot of folks who are completing their degrees to advance on the salary schedule for next year. It is a contractual obligation that we have. So I can't limit or deny anyone for doing it. We do have to honor it if it's a legitimized program that we also sit down and talk about.
Thank you.
Ms. Wagner?
Thank you. So I just wanted to ask, I know it was mentioned that we are, I'm not sure who said it, but that we're not fully, we are not fully staffing the districts. I just wanted to go back to that, because that just concerned me a bit. Was that pertaining to teachers or paras?
No, that was, that was very specific to paraeducators. That's very difficult for us to be fully staffed and learning tutors, which support the academic piece. So those would be the two subgroups, and substitutes, just general substitutes. I know those aren't the same as like building substitutes who are in their buildings every single day, but it's very difficult for us to attain and acquire and attain substitutes.
Okay, thank you for, I appreciate the explanation. I think that will hopefully down the road lead us to a more important conversation about our paraprofessionals in this town. But I also wanted to ask then, I just want to make sure I understand it clearly. So it may seem as though there's more money in that account, because there are paras, there are vacancies, therefore that salary for those pairs is still in there. However, if those pairs would hire, were to be hired, that money would, wouldn't come out. I am not a math person, so if that sounds crazy, I could add some figurative language too and make it unscented paper, but that's kind of where I'm at.
I think it was very well described, very well described.
Sorry, the brain. Okay, one more. I never wrote down things. Oh, with advancement, so if somebody gets their master's and obtains that certificate in January, are they brought to the next step and therefore awarded a higher salary line at that point? Or is it not until the end of the school year, or is it fiscal year?
So it is always for the upcoming school year. So if I were to, if I were to get my master's in January, my salary advancement would go into effect for next school year. Equally, the deadline in the contract to submit your transcript, any certificates and such, to prove that you've advanced your salary, advanced your degree for salary advancement is by September fifteenth. And then once we receive all that and review it, they then are prorated back to the August, let's say, twenty-seventh date of start for that fiscal year, for that school year, to have that advanced salary schedule.
And then you said because of your conversations with these individuals, which I so appreciate, we are able to project, so there's not, typically there's not any big surprises, like all of a sudden somebody has a doctorate, and where did that come from?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Danielle, did you have your hand up again?
I did.
All right, go ahead.
So this is kind of a little off-topic, and I apologize, but in, like, for next year's budget, so it would be awesome if in the budget book, we have the proposed budget of the current year, and then the asking budget for the following year, if there was a line in there that said what we used in the, from the budget that we requested. So just kind of keep that in mind moving forward, because I think that would alleviate this conversation and at least alleviate any questions I have and any lack of, like, I just, I still, I'm like, I'm hearing, even in today's conversation, like, I heard it's just, it's not, it's not the para-salary, but then Steve just said it is the para-salary, but then I heard it was to sub, the substitutes for the para. So it would just be nice in the future to have it be a little bit more transparent.
So basically what you're asking for is previous budget, actual, and then proposed.
That is a much better way to say it, Dr. Fletcher, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll go with COVID head over here.
Ms. Weaver?
I just follow up on adding onto that. Wouldn't that be, like, we have in the current budget, we have like the percentage spent, like in the superintendent's report. So I guess would it have to be, because as we planned our budget for the next fiscal year, we're currently still allocating during it. So I guess it would have to be like twenty to twenty to twenty-one to be a completed budget year. We budget during a budget year for the next budget year. So, and, you know, I think we've had those conversations as well, like, oh, it'd be good to know the actuals, which I think are in our current report of percentage spent on every line item. So I guess if we're looking for, I'm just trying to also get that, it would be a complete budget, if that's my understanding.
Yeah, I think it would have to be to date, yeah, used to date. And then we, as we did earlier in this budget process, we also made a projection of possible usage in each one of those.
Thank you.
Ms. Yopp, do you have your hand up again?
Sorry, that was an accident.
Okay. All right, so coming back to this, this line item, are there any more questions related to the wording? Okay, so I would entertain a motion if somebody would like to read it. Go ahead.
Move the Board of Education budget for 2022, 2023 be reduced by eight hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. The entire cut will be offset by the utilization of the non-lapsing fund resources. Accounts to be adjusted are as follows. Language Arts, one oh, one-two-dash-one-eleven, certified salary, one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and forty cents, twenty percent each. Math, one oh, two oh, dash, one-eleven, certified salary, one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and forty cents, twenty percent each. Reading, one oh, two six, dash, one-eleven, certified salary, one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and forty cents, twenty percent each. Science, one hun, one oh, two eight, dash, one-eleven, certified salary, one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and forty cents, twenty percent each. Social Studies, one oh, three oh, dash, one-eleven, certified salary, one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and forty cents, twenty percent each.
All right, the motion is made. Do I have a second? Second has been made. And now open it up for further discussion on the motion itself. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Michael Blanda?
Yes.
Danielle Droste?
Oh.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher?
Yes.
Beth Manki-Hatbagnar?
Yes.
Richard Loverrier? Richard Loverrier? Amy Parati?
Yes.
Sam Sharma?
Yes.
Jessica Weaver?
Yes.
Anastasia?
Yes. There's no sound.
We heard you, Anastasia. We didn't hear from Richard.
Yes, I voted yes.
Okay, thank you, Richard.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just don't know what happened with the mic there.
Okay. The motion is passed. We are going to move on to the next item. It's a discussion and possible action of the school calendar for 2023, 2024. Dr. Brummett?
Yes, excuse me. Put simply, we just needed to reflect in the school calendar that we have added the holidays that were agreed upon in the previous school calendar. So this would reflect a start of school on Monday, August twenty-eighth for students, and last day of school, June sixth. And there's a little more detail for, for the board's knowledge. There's the color-coded calendar that I know helps folks with that. And what we're discovering too with the addition of our holidays is that each year, some of these holidays do not fall on school days. So they don't always impact the calendar. So we've provided a little key at the bottom of the, of the, this printout or the calendar to show you which holidays will not be falling on school days and which ones will. And that also carries over to 2024. We did make an adjustment. We originally were going to have Three Kings Day be a PD day for teachers, but because it falls on a non-school day, we did not do that. Instead, that PD day was bumped over to February second, after much discussion about timing and the data cycles that we have. So those are the updates to that calendar. So I can now turn it back over to Dr. Fletcher.
All right, so I would like somebody to read the motion. Jessica?
Move the Board of Education adopt the 2023, 2024 school calendar as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. It's open for discussion. Amy Parati?
Thank you. I just want to say, enjoy the first day of school being on Monday. I know that doesn't typically happen, but I'm glad it worked out that way. Just because I think it's really nice to, I know the teachers have to go back, but it's nice to sometimes have that extra weekend, it seems. And a question on the PD day on February second. Is there any consideration of making it a little later so it can coincide with the longer, having a long weekend in February for the President's Day holiday?
I will ask, I mean, we had this discussion kind of in, with the mindset of when we would get our data back from our, I believe, our winter benchmarks. I don't know if that would have any detrimental impact. I don't know, Wendy, if you want to comment on that?
Sure, I mean, that was very specific, as Dr. Brummett said, to when teachers tend to need extended time, because a lot of our data sets are coming in. If we moved it to the sixteenth, then I would recommend that early release day that's currently on the thirteenth be moved to the sixth, so we at least have that day with some extended time. And then some follow-up could be done on the sixteenth, and that could be manageable. Would you agree, Mr. Freese?
I'm also, I just asked the question, it wasn't, it was just a suggestion, if anyone else?
You can propose an amendment.
Let me ask a question first, hold on. It's a question that I don't know that I've ever asked, and I've always wondered, so I'm just going to throw it out there. If the state of Connecticut says a hundred and eighty days, why do we do a hundred and eighty-one?
I did inherit the one eighty-one, although this year we're doing one eighty because of all the
Yeah.
stuff. Would anyone, is that a, that's a contractual situation, or how did we come upon that? What is the history of that here in Newington?
The, the teacher's contract, it is in the teacher's contract, but I don't know if the day, is that just their number of workdays, Steve? That's, yeah, so we, if, if we were reducing the number of student days to one eighty, we would be using a teacher day for another purpose like we are this year.
So we could cut the calendar to a hundred and eighty student days, is what I'm
You could, and actually, that was agreed to this year.
Yeah.
So, and it does give us a cushion too, if there are
What are your thoughts, Mr. Freese?
Snow days.
Thank you for asking.
We do also just have instructional time that we look at for each subject area, and I would just want to kind of measure it against that. There are other things that come up throughout the year that do impact instructional time, although wonderful. We have various celebrations that are going on this time of year, a lot of other things. So I would just want to have a nice balance and maybe good rationale as to, to why we would be doing it. I think that would be critical and important. We know educating our students is critical and important, and then, you know, instructional time that we have with them is of value. So I would just look at that. I know when we moved to early release days, that was one consideration, the impact on instructional time. Having the one eighty-one days sometimes helps support the ability for us to meet the state guidelines in those instructional areas. For Tom?
Thank you, and the board may not know this, but we are recently hit with a surprise state law that requires us to add, make sure all teachers have a thirty-minute lunch break. And right now, our teachers have twenty-five-minute lunch breaks. So we're going to be challenged with how to fit that, and it's a mandate, we have to do it. It's unusual, but we have been asking all of our proper consultants and they said, you got to do it. So we, that is another impact, could be an impact to our instructional time, though we haven't figured out our resolution yet.
So just back to my question, sorry, Dr. Fletcher, I didn't know you want to move on there. But I believe we are, before this calendar would go into effect, there's a new contract with the teacher union that would be discussed, right? Twenty, it would be for
Correct.
that time. So I'm just wondering if that, you know, obviously with Ms. Parati's comment, if maybe we, I don't want to say table it yet, but just maybe explore, take a look at whether or not the sixteenth would work for the professional development day. To be honest, when I heard it was on Groundhog's Day, I thought that that was just cruel to be in professional development on Groundhog's Day. But, you know, so maybe looking at that, and then maybe exploring some of the data, Steve, that you mentioned, because I'm just curious, looking also around the state, other districts, you know, we do a lot of comparisons. So I'm just curious, who's doing one eighty-one? And I understand the early release stuff, but I also am cognizant of the fact it's just one extra day. So I just, I'm very curious about that. So I'm not ready to table it yet, but with two things as possible amendments, it might be something to explore.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Droste?
Dr. Fletcher, can I respond to Mr. Brando?
Please, go ahead.
So, Mr. Brando, I do know that surrounding districts have more than a hundred and eighty-one days, let alone a hundred and eighty. And I would be concerned, like Mr. Freese said, when we cut that down to be added in those half-days, it was like all the rage that we were cutting education time with the students. So I think that if anything, we should add more days. I know teachers, we can't do that because of the contract. And it also does give us a fluff, like if something really odd happens, we can cut it down to a hundred and eighty. And I think it's awesome that the state of Connecticut finally realized that teachers deserve thirty minutes of duty-free lunch. Just going to throw that out there.
All the teachers are happy, and the administrators are scratching their heads. Ms. Wagner?
Yeah, and thinking of all the ways I can use those extra five minutes of lunch, maybe an extra cookie in the lunchbox, I don't know. I was just thinking, can we add the amendment of the February sixteenth, Professional Development Day, and then leave it at the one eighty-one? But like this year, if other circumstances happen, move it to one eighty if we had to, similarly to this year, so that we're at least moving this on tonight and kind of putting some finality in the heads of parents and teachers and whatnot.
And then I would endorse the PL day. And then I, I would endorse the PL day moving to, uh, the, the 6th, I believe, is what Mr. Freezy and Ms. Cross recommended. Does that make sense?
It does. Mr. Branda?
Yeah, the, I mean, this isn't the hill I'm going to die on tonight, so, um, I, I'm fine with it. It's, it was more like, I just, I was very curious about it, and seeing as this year, we were able to make it work. It's something maybe to explore in the future, but I would rather focus on, um, what Amy has discussed and switching those days if we wanted to move this forward tonight.
Okay. So. Go ahead. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Rose.
I, I literally feel like I actually just checked my phone to make sure I wasn't losing my mind. This isn't for next school year, it's for like the following school year. Because it says 2023, 2024. So would it be detrimental if we didn't vote on it tonight? And we put it, you know, we found, like, looked at that more? I'm just asking, I don't really care, because my kids aren't going to be in school. So the parents who have kids in school probably are more aware of this, but, um, I just want to make sure I'm not losing my mind, because I think I am.
Well, she's right, that's the subsequent school year. Luckily, we already approved this
Right.
the following years.
You, you can go after him.
Well, just to that point, I think in this situation with the February stuff, while it is, we're talking two years, two school years out, that is a very different kind of President's Day holiday that maybe some families, if they knew now, could plan ahead, you know? But I, I think you can always go back to the calendar, which is also why I'm not really going to die on the hill of 181 versus 180 right now. But I think in terms of setting up school holidays like this, it might be a good idea to just put that in as this is what you can expect, but, um, I'm open to whatever.
Ms. Weaver?
Yeah, I think it's just good to have in the books. Uh, like, I'm planning a nice trip in 2024. So, um, you know, just looking at it, I know we traditionally, I think, do two years out i- in terms of just past precedent. So I think it's fine if, you know, we come to the same year and we, I mean, we've had to like amend it on the year, think about snow days and everything else, but I think having that holiday weekend, that would be helpful to know, just like, given inflation, we don't know where we'll be in two years. I can't express the, the level of gravity I speak with that now. Um, but I think it's just helpful to have. So happy to vote on it tonight and then come back for amendments, uh, further amendments, as we should say, uh, in the future.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Parati.
Could I make a motion to amend the motion? Um, to move the PD day to February 16th and move the PL day on February 13th to Tuesday, February 6th?
Okay. It, motion is made and it is seconded. Are there any further questions on the amendment? Okay, so all we're doing right now is we're going to vote to make a change in the motion, and then we will have to vote on the motion after that. Okay, does that make sense to everybody? All right. So I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll on the amendment.
Michael Branda?
Yes.
Danielle Rose.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Nike, Hutwagner.
Yes.
Richard LaBriere.
Yes.
Amy Parati.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yeh.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, so we have a new motion before us now. Okay, did somebody write it down by any chance? I know it's recorded.
I can make it up. Wait, so it'll be, I can say, move the Board of Education adopt the 2022, 2023, 2024 calendar with amendment as amended.
Yep, so there's a motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any other questions? All right, we'll call the, uh, call the question.
Michael Branda?
Yes.
Danielle Rose?
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher?
Yes.
Beth Nike, Hutwagner.
Yes.
Richard LaBriere.
Yes.
Amy Parati.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yeh.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you, everybody. We are now moving on to, um, F3. This is the Healthy Food Certification. Dr. Brummett?
Thank you, this is an annual, uh, approval. And this, this is updated by Dana Markovics, our Food Service Director. I, you have been provided in your packet, uh, for lack of a better word, a flow chart, a food flow chart. And that gives you information on what is approved. Why we do this is because it allows us to get a higher rate of reimbursement for the food that we serve. So it is advisable to accept the Healthy Food Certification because it does benefit the district fiscally. So tonight, before the board, there is a Healthy Food Certification document. And I believe at the end, there is a recommended motion. So I will turn it back over to Dr. Fletcher.
Okay. So we do have, we have a, um, a short novel. Go ahead, Ms. Hutwagner.
Getting prepared. Okay. Healthy food option pursuant to CGS Section 10-21-F. The Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30th.
2023.
I think that's 2023. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stars, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups. Exemption for food and beverage exemptions. The Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards and beverages not listed in Section 10-221-Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store.
All right, the motion is made.
Second.
Seconded. Any questions relative to the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask, call the question.
Michael Branda?
Yes.
Danielle Rose?
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher?
Yes.
Beth Nike, Hutwagner?
Yes.
Richard LaBriere?
Yes.
Amy Parati?
Yes.
Sam Sharma?
Yes.
Jessica Weaver?
Yes.
Anastasia Yeh?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you, everybody. We're now moving on to item F4, our Board of Education meeting dates for 2022-2023 school year. Dr. Brummett?
Very good, this is a typical, uh, task for this time of year. It, uh, acknowledges that we have traditionally scheduled our board meetings on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month, beginning at 7:00 PM, and unless otherwise determined by the board. And there is traditionally only one meeting in November and December as a result of vacation days in both months. Both of these informational and action items are scheduled for the same meeting when only one meeting is scheduled in a month. If necessary, the board can convene special meetings in months where there's only one meeting scheduled. So below there is the recommended motions, which reflect the detail in the memo about our methodology for scheduling board meetings.
Ms. Weaver?
All right, auctioneer up, here we go. Move the Board of Education approve the following meeting dates for the 2022-2023 school year. September 14th, 2022, September 28th, 2022, October 12th, 2022, October 26th, 2022, November 16th, 2022, December 14th, 2022, January 11th, 2023, January 25th, 2023, February 15th, 2023, March 15th, 2023, March 29th, 2023, April 5th, 2023, April 19th, 2023, May 10th, 2023, May 24th, 2023, and June 14th, 2023.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions or, uh, discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Parati.
I love calendars. Um, so I was looking at the meetings from this school year, and in September, the first meeting was a week earlier. And, um, I was just wondering if that was by design? Or, you know, this is already, September 14th is already three weeks into the school year, so is it, would it be beneficial to have a meeting sooner? Closer to the beginning of the school year?
As, as it says in the first paragraph here, typically on the second and fourth Wednesdays. So the second Wednesday just happens to follow on September 14th. Or fall on. Okay. Good, all right. Motion's made, motion seconded. We'll call the question.
Michael Branda?
Yes.
Danielle Rose?
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher?
Yes.
Beth Nike, Hutwagner?
Yes.
Richard LaBriere?
Yes.
Amy Parati?
Yes.
Sam Sharma?
Yes.
Jessica Weaver?
Yes.
Anastasia Yeh?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, everybody. We are now moving on to item F5, and that is an action item, Budget Recommendations for the remainder of the fiscal year 2021-2022.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. So this is a memo prepared by Lou Jacobowicz, which outlines, you know, some of the challenges to this year's budget, as well as some of the, uh, you know, there were COVID protocols still needing to be paid for, some things that continued this year, such as tents, that we didn't necessarily budget for. We also, you know, mention in this, the use of the health benefit credit in next year's budget, or already accounted for in the, uh, MOU. So, um, we've, in the memo, he also talks about some projects that are, were put on hold. Those were mentioned during our, uh, discussion about the capital budget, such as the windows at John Patterson, the bus garage is still kind of not, there's a whole lot of action going on there. The good news is that John Patterson Parking Lot is going to move forward, so, well, the, the John Patterson Parking Lot was talked about at the TPZ meeting tonight. I don't know what the outcome there is. What I wanted to do is just cover the rest of this, and then I did ask Mr. Jacobowicz to review with the full board this evening some of the, uh, activities relative to John Patterson Parking Lot, to make sure everyone is fully informed. But the rest of the memo outlines that we're moving forward, as Mr. Morgan said earlier, with the security vestibules, with our last two schools, with Jaffe and John Patterson, happening this summer. We are doing some ventilation work at the high school. Uh, we always do our asbestos work as best, as much as possible over the summer. That's going to happen at Martin Kellogg. And, uh, we are looking at, and this was in our capital budget as well, resurfacing the track and alumni field, as well as some technology purchases that are in the capital budget. The town is going to, is planning to complete the major roof replacement this summer at the high school. That was also discussed with the board on several occasions. And, um, there has been some positive impact on our budget with special ed outplacement costs somewhat lower than anticipated. Uh, some of our students that might normally be outplaced, some of their parents opted for homeschooling, or they just didn't, we didn't have to outplace children this year. If there is some, uh, residual monies in our excess cost allocation that is transmitted back to the town, and, um, and in some cases, the town does have to repay that money, but, or it comes out of the, uh, uh, ECS grant. So, let me look further down this, and then we'll go from there. We don't, uh, this shouldn't be a surprise to the board, given the tight budget year we've had. Unlike previous years where we have, uh, shown some realized savings, we absolutely don't anticipate, uh, realized savings, though. Due to careful budgeting, uh, we also believe that we'll be less reliant on the non-lapsing fund than the $2 million initially projected. That, those items remain to be seen. And at a subsequent meeting, the board would be provided with, um, the actual financials. Where does all this money look like in the budget? Tonight simply is, uh, discussing with the board projects um, that we would like to move forward with before the end of the school year. Um, I do think, you know, given some of the chan, the concerns that have been raised about John Patterson, I did ask Lou to come prepared this evening to give the board a quick overview. Um, I'll, I'll do this kickoff, and then it's going to go to Lou, because he's, he's actually been very intimately involved in all the architectural pieces. We've wanted to do this for years. Uh, last year, the town could not allocate us time with the town engineer. This year, we did have some initial support from the town engineer. Actually, I will say, Mr. Firstenberg's been fantastic. Uh, as we analyzed the project, he recommended that due to traffic pattern concerns and ADA concerns, that we expand the scope, uh, of the project while we're tearing everything up. Why not get some other things in there from an ADA perspective and from a drainage perspective and from a traffic flow perspective? Um, and he, he act, you know, that is his line of work, so we do take his recommendations seriously. That triggered us to do more estimates and analysis. So now, Lou, I'll turn it to you for explanation of these maps, because I don't do well with maps. Didn't do well in geometry either, okay.
Okay, like any other project, it starts with its infancy of an idea of what to do. And as it matures and you polish all the edges on everything, it comes to much better focus and you can optimize, uh, the plan overall. So last fall, when we were looking to try to advance this project for the summer, uh, we had a preliminary design done that would add about 25 parking spaces, basically confined to the south entrance, uh, off of Church Street, where it would maintain really the congestion and the difficulty of navigation in that area uh, by, you know, creating an in and an out, and not addressing any of the other concerns. At the main entrances where all the traffic queuing backup happens, where from the front door, we maybe can get three or four cars into the driveway, and then everybody else is up on Halloran, backed up to the stop sign at Church and Halloran. And that would not go away, that was not even conceived of in the original design. So as we start looking at the, you know, the choices about, okay, what to do next, uh, the next version of this went to the, uh, just putting the block of parking spaces further up and out, where we'd still maintain this in and out off of Church Street. That really wasn't, uh, reviewed favorably from a traffic, uh, study, where it really didn't provide any kind of queuing. It still left a lot of, uh, uh, kind of the Wild West of driving cars around every day. Does not just deal at all with the, uh, safety concerns with queuing, all the cars at the intersection, all the kids just in and out of the whole area. So this original design was the basis of when we came to the estimate of around 260,000, which would, you know, cover the back area and expand it a bit, uh, in these areas. So now, if you can switch to the second, uh, map. Nope, that's not the, oh, you said it's a black and white, okay, yep, that's the right one. So now, this is how it's transformed into the final, uh, decision. So, uh, instead of trying to push all traffic in and out off of Church Street, it'll be only, uh, inbound traffic from Church Street and adding the parking area directly west of the school into the big open area, and then having a discharge lane which joins the, uh, driveway at the front of the school. Uh, you'll see that there's a long, large sidewalk that goes the entire span of the west side of the school, which will join to the back entrance, as well as join the sidewalk in front, the front entrance. The contour of the land in this area is where the parking lot is really in a bowl, so it's down about two feet in elevation change from, uh, uh, the sidewalk that's, or the pathway that's along the side of it. We have two ADA issues that we wanted to resolve with, uh, this design as well. The side cafeteria entrance door only has a walkout to a stoop where you where you have an ADA barrier at that point. We also have all of the ADA parking spaces much closer to the place gate on the front side of the school, and not where they're supposed to be adjacent to the main entrance of the school. So we were going to kind of put everything all together and redo all of it. So besides the infancy of just building a new parking lot and resurfacing the back, we've added the whole sidewalk program that goes on this. And we're also going to, what they call mill and overlay the front parking area, which is scrape off an inch or two of the top surface, and then resurface it so it looks brand new. And then it'll be restriped to match the ADA requirements that we have. So this will then move the queuing line for all cars, where everybody comes in off Church Street. And we have the ability to have about 18 cars queued up, you know, coming in the entrance, all the way along the sidewalk on the west side of the school. So all that traffic that was up on Halloran, pushing back into the intersection, should be gone, as far as that will work out. You know, because we've taken that traffic off the street and put it onto our property that's here. We also, by going from 75 to 105 parking spaces, it does have supplemental benefits for the community on weekends, where they have all the sports events for the kids that are there, and there's no place to park. So there's a lot of cars that basically just help themselves to going out onto the place area behind the school, where there's absolutely no traffic control or measures in place for student safety of any type. So in trying to come up with a comprehensive plan of addressing the parking needs, making the ADA fixes we wanted to do, address all the parking, excuse me, the queuing deficiencies that forced traffic up onto Church Street, and getting traffic off of Church and Halloran onto our property, you know, coupled with the benefit for all the weekend and after-hours activities at the school, really offers five major benefits to the town, where the initial plan was just, let's get some more parking spaces. So the scope expanded, the purpose expanded, and the, I think the design is terrific on this. You know, and working with the town engineer, it really addressed those right things. We had this reviewed by the, both our security director, as well as the gentleman who's the local traffic authority, is Officer Ryan Dean of the New England PD. And he said this is great for addressing all these needs in the area. So that kind of takes us to where we're at. What really were the big drivers for the cost difference from the original estimate till now are adding the whole sidewalk system along the west side of the building, adding the mill and overlay for the front parking lot, because that was not in the original design. And really, the unfortunate impact of inflation on every price everywhere. I mean, we've seen it, and all kinds of things that we're buying these days, where the price escalation is just, you know, every week, prices go up on things. So in order to get this done effectively, you know, we have to be willing to pay the price to do that. So we're up in the 430 range of where we think the final cost is going to be on this.
And just to add to that, thank you, Lou. And Lou did a similar presentation last night to the town council. There was a comparison made to the library parking lot project, but this is a much bigger project. And of course, we do use town staff, but we have to pay for that, whereas town staff are baked into existing salaries. In terms of-
Projects, excuse me. This project will actually have to be contracted, because the town doesn't have the capacity to do this work this year. We will be using TILCON and a site contractor, who will find out who the winning bid is on Friday of this week.
And in no way, shape, or form was this meant to be lack of transparency. It just does happen when you start a project and have professionals come in. They make suggestions to improve the project and improve traffic flow. And when we heard about that, it made good sense to us that, you know, we've all been to Patterson. I was there a couple of days ago. I showed you the pictures. It's just really not suitable for the kind of activities that are happening there. And with COVID hopefully sunsetting, we're going to have more parent activities there than, than we have in the last two years. So that is, that is the explanation behind that expansion. And I will turn it back over to Dr. Fletcher, which is really part of the original discussion, which is the, you know, our action on the fiscal recommendations.
Okay, Ms. Yeh.
Hi, how are you? This is for Dr. Brummett. I just have a question. I know when we originally approved the school CIP, there were multiple projects that had to get completed. Now that the John Patterson project is costing so much, is this going to hinder other, you know, projects becoming complete? I mean, or are we going to hope the town's going to help us with that? I mean, and, and also, what projects are going to be put aside to ensure that John Patterson parking lot, you know, gets completed? I mean, originally, we were at 260,000, now 450,000. So maybe I'm reading it wrong. I see there are, you know, we, we have like 1.15, is, was that right? I mean, how does that work?
You're correct. We have access to a little over $800,000 right now. Some of that money is not accessible at this time. I will turn this over to Lou as to how, we can definitely afford the project, but I think the question I heard you ask is, will this impact other projects negatively? So I'll turn that to Lou as-
Okay, thank you.
The work that you do.
The question is yes and no on both fronts. The things that we have to be mindful of is in the pandemic environment here, contractors, you know, do have the propensity not to perform, are not able to respond, become uninterested in the work, because they can't handle the load that's asked. One of the things we were looking to do was a resurfacing of the track up at Alumni Field this year. Well, I've been chasing contractors for eight months, and I could not get anybody to come down and visit until last week. And then they say, yeah, we'll do it for, you know, $400,000. And when I was originally looking at this, when I was talking to contractors a year and a half ago, about, you know, what's the scope, and it was around $100,000. So it's clearly, somebody says, well, if you want to do business with me, I'll be more than happy to take your money. And clearly, the, that's going to be a nonstarter, because it's realistically just not worth that much to do it. And we'd be better off waiting for a while and let the market calm down in that area for that stayaway. You know, the track is 15 years old. It is getting pockmarked and tired, but it's certainly, there's no safety hazard. There's no, you know, you know, critical issues that we have to deal with there. So if we have to wait another year on that, that wouldn't be a concern. You know, a issue like the parking lot at Patterson is much different. You know, this year, we were very, very fortunate. We really didn't have a bad winter, where there was tons of snow, where we lost 25% of our parking spaces and had, you know, 10-foot snowbanks everywhere. At the most, we had maybe a foot and a half of snow on the ground at any point. So we never had to, you know, pay the piper for just not having parking and having cars everywhere. You know, we were significantly looking at a variety of contingency plans. How are we going to get people into the building if we only have 50 parking spaces available? So like any else, you know, we probably are on borrowed time. We probably have 50 feet of snow this year. And unless we act with an element of urgency about our parking and our staff needs, along with student safety, you know, it will just become a chronic and almost a gridlock-type problem. So it's been identified as number one on our list for about three years now, of the things to do, even though we have volatility of the cost that we experience, you know. Even though, besides the point of us expanding the scope, take advantage of the opportunity to get other things done, that is not one I would ever recommend for putting it off, because there's consequences for this one, where I don't have consequences on the track. That's just, can wait another year. So we have to, you know, we constantly are reevaluating any of the items that are in the proposal of the board CIP that we make in January. And it's not so much that things change, but some things you just can't get done, no matter how hard you try on it. And then you have, you know, even the concerns that were raised since yesterday's, you know, tragic event in Texas, that, you know, heightened awareness and requests for security improvements that are around the district, that maybe that's really more important than, you know, worrying about, you know, getting a track done. You know, so we're constantly in the evaluation, reevaluation mode on every piece of work we consider doing. And, you know, I have to be honest, that it does become fluid at times, because you have to balance what you can get done, along with what you have for resources, you know, to be able to, you know, allow ourselves to get boxed in and not do a project, because the, our preliminary cost estimate, which was not based on an architectural design, it was based on our rough work going out to the site and saying, okay, we know it's about X number of square feet, and we know this costs about this much to get it done. And we have a, you know, an informal process to do our initial cost estimating, because to invest significant money in architectural design in a formal price estimate will take six months. And if you don't do the work, you've just wasted the money on the project. So the, you know, differentiation in prices in our initial estimates, you know, should be expected to a degree. That's here, because we're not investing our resources into the studies. We're investing in, into doing work. And, you know, that's one of the things we're always really proud of. We've always been able to, you know, make things happen for the benefit of the district, and be able to find the right projects with the, and be able to match the resources to it, to keep us, you know, up with our responsibilities as best as possible.
Uh, thank you. So just to be clear, the only project we're putting on hold right now is the track? And that was 100,000, correct?
Yes.
And so the increase from 260 to 450 is more than 100,000. What other projects were put on hold?
Well, some of the other projects that are there are not specific at this time, such as the carpeting, the painting work. That's evaluated each spring. And if we ended up only doing $25,000 of painting compared to the $50,000 allotment, we would have 25,000 to redirect into one of the other projects. You know, it's not that tight on a script, because we don't even get those listed until this time of year from the schools, as far as what needs to be done. So we have to balance our resources and priorities to determine what's the best use of the money at that time, which is right at this time of the year.
I just wanted to make sure, because I was looking at it, and I saw that there were like HVAC and different things. And I wanted to make sure the crucial things that needed to be completed were completed. I am 100% for John Patterson parking lot. My son goes to John Patterson, and even coming, you know, 15 minutes early, I still can't find a parking space. So I, I, I am for the project. I just want to make sure that there aren't things that are being, you know, passed up on just to do this project. I know HVAC was one of them. I was trying to pull up the list. There was, there was a few things on there that I thought were extremely important, and I want to make sure we're taking those into consideration. And if we don't have the funds to do it, you know, we should feel comfortable in us to ask the town and say, look, this, this came out tomorrow, you know, we still need to do this, and this is important. So that's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, we do not bypass the most important items every year. We always put our money, you know, as best as we can against the number one, number two priorities each year that go through the CIP account.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Danielle Dros.
I have two questions. The first one, as I'm reading this document, it says, two of the three major carryover projects could be done. And then replacement work at JP Alon, see this, the, there you go, the second and third paragraphs. And this is projects that are moving forward in this, in the Board of CIP account, include, and this, all of those. So am I understanding that you're asking us to vote to pass all of those forward? Because I agree, we need to do the J, the John Patterson parking lot. And if it's going to cost us $500,000, I don't want to say, yeah, and we're going to do all of this, and then have it come back and say, well, the board said we could do it. So like specifically, are we cutting out any of those things in that one, two, three, third paragraph, where there's projects that are moving forward? Sorry, it's the end of the day. My nose is getting stuffy. It's the weirdest side effect of this stupid virus. So it, on there, it's ventilators, asbestos abatement, JP parking lot, resurfacing the track you just said we were getting rid of, technology upgrades. So are we really going to be able to do that with the $300,000 or $400,000 that we have left over after we pay for the John Patterson parking lot?
We should be able, you know, substantially get most, if not all, of that done.
And then my other question is actually, to Dr. Brummett, at the beginning, you said we had, again, approximately $800,000 available to us, but it wasn't all accessible to us? Can you just clarify what that means? Because I don't know what that means.
I'm going to have Lou answer that.
Sure. In the board CIP account, it's a revolving fund. So there is, new money is coming into it all throughout the year. There is the mandatory $125,000 appropriation from the town to fund into the board CIP account. We get a small investment credit on the earnings, on the various funds that are invested by the town. We get all of the building use fees, all of the tuition, tuitions that we receive for support that we're doing for other school districts and for open choice. All those go into the account as a positive. When they do, they go into what's called the undesignated account. So I do not have, or anybody at the Board of it does not have any authority to touch that, unless we get the town council to take action and reappropriate it from the undesignated to a specific project. Typically, all the receipts that go into the undesignated this year become the basis for building the project profile for next year's budget. So we typically never touch that at this point. So far this year, we've got about $220,000 of receipts in. So there's a million, 16,000 dollars in the fund as of yesterday. And about 220,000 is locked into the undesignated reserve, which we can't touch without town council action. So that leaves us the residual, which is around $807,000, that we can access across all of our projects.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Richard Laverrier.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Fletcher. My question is for Mr. Jacobowicz, if that's all right, sir?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Jacobowicz, when I was listening, when I was hearing the updated presentation, there was comments about ADA requirements. Did that contribute to the increase in the cost from 260 to 450?
Directly speaking, not a lot. We knew that as we worked through the design, and we saw the way we wanted the traffic flow to work out, we needed to incorporate that modification into the plan, but it was not a driver for how the plan was put together. It was a byproduct that said, okay, you have this that's immediately adjacent to the area you're working on. You want to try to correct that as part of the work. The part in the front is tied to the mill and overlay, with getting it restriped according to the ADA requirements. And since we're going to be cutting that parking area to reconfigure the roads and the sidewalks up around the front of the building, it was recommended to do it all and get it all done at once.
All right, thank you. And Michael Peranda, oh, you still have a question?
Sir, yeah, yes, sir. How come we, how come we didn't know about the ADA requirements in the original proposal?
Well, the original proposal was to just add parking spaces off of the back parking lot. It wasn't to address or impact either the area along the west side of the school or the front of the school. So as the concept expanded to take traffic off of Halloran Drive in Church Street and run it through the lot, these things, you know, became, you know, the neighbors of the project, and needed to be addressed as part of that work.
I see. And did the, did the, did these, did the requirements that we've complied with, with the updated proposal, has that, because, did that contribute to a reduction in the overall spots? Because my, my recollection was that the original was supposed to be 50 or 60 spots, and we're looking at 34 now. So to repeat my question, I suppose, is, was, was complying with the ADA, did that contribute to the fewer number of spots in the updated proposal?
No, that didn't. Had no impact into the number of spots.
I see.
60 spots.
Okay, well, all right. I guess that, that's, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Jacobowicz. Thank you, Dr. Fletcher.
You're welcome. Wasn't the original 25?
Sixty.
The original was-
What was the original proposed?
Whatever was on that drawing over there.
I will get that back up. Initial, so this, what we're showing here is what would have happened if no other suggestions were made by the town engineer, et cetera.
So all the parking spaces along the south side, which is the lower level, are exact replacement of what we currently have. You have that core of spaces in the middle, which are new. You have that core of spaces in the middle, which are new. Then the group that is on the top, which is about ten, I can't read it from here.
Yeah, eleven.
Yeah, eleven. That I believe we lost either one or two spaces because of the room we would have to make for ultimately the sidewalk going here there.
So it looks like the original proposal would have let us, gained us twenty six spots. But we would have lost a few, Lou, uh, through the other modifications.
Right.
So net maybe twenty four spots?
Well, this one, you know, when we move to, uh, design plan number four, which has the turn and the driveway going along, parallel to the school. Uh, that would be, that would basically lose either space nine, ten and eleven, or just ten and eleven. I can't remember. Uh, off the top of my head, and the group in the middle. If, if you can just scroll up a little bit where you can see the parking count on this floor. Right hand corner.
Should I go down or up?
Down. Okay, so this one, you know, has forty six proposing seventy four. So this was twenty eight spots. Twenty six, twenty eight for the original plan.
Right, maybe there was confusion about the total, but we do have parking spots there now. This was going to add, sounds like about twenty four to twenty six spots. Um, and then the second proposal gets us up to about thirty four? So it gets another about ten spots. I know, it, it
In that neighborhood.
Don't hold us all these numbers because we haven't drawn the lines yet. I mean, it's gonna, as soon as we get this project done, if it goes through is, there will be, you know, analysis and lines will be drawn, but we'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of.
Right. And just for everybody's information, it did pass at TPZ and was referred back to the town council for their.
Great. So it didn't have any issues at TPZ. Okay. That's good news. Thank you, Lou.
All right, Mr. Brandon.
So I also am awful with maps, probably worse than Dr. Brummett. Um, okay, so I'm a Patterson parent for one more year next school year. So I am coming down Church Street from the Richard Street side. And I normally turn right onto Halloran and then I just say my prayers and I deal with everything that I'm dealing with in that Patterson circle.
You'll never get to Halloran. You'll take a right hand turn into the.
I will take a right hand turn before or after beacon. After, right, right after that cross?
Couple hundred feet after beacon.
So then if you're coming from New Britain Avenue, you're still going through that Patriot Lane crosswalk, right?
Yep.
Okay, so then students that are walkers, and I know I'm probably just going down like a path that maybe we don't want to, but I'm just curious. So students who are walkers sometimes take that path behind, right by Beacon Street. We will, I assume they, that won't be happening anymore, or would that be?
Still have, I believe it has a crossing guard there.
Yeah, so they would cross that beacon instead of going up to mo- most times a lot of kids go up to Halloran and cut or Patriot and go through there. So I'm just thinking about recommendations to walkers too, in terms of a new traffic pattern and thinking about to be honest, the Beacon Street cross in the morning is barely used now. It's the Patriot Lane is the one that's most used. So I just want to be sure that we're cognizant of walkers now in both areas and with different traffic patterns at the Patriot Lane one. Cause now when I drop off, I will come up Halloran, right? I will still, I'll go through like I went through the Wallace Circle. Is that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, and then I'll come out and then I go up Halloran and I bang a left onto, okay.
Right, whatever you want to leave.
Okay, all right, I got it. Thanks. I'm going to have like a hundred parents ask me what, so I need to understand it in my own visual map. Thank you.
Well, let's talk to, like, put the, yeah, that's the version right there, sir.
All right. So I'm going to move on to Anastasia Yopp and then I'm going to bring it back to the recommended motion. Okay, so Ms. Yopp, go ahead.
Did you call on me? I'm sorry.
Your, your hand is up.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you. I apologize. Um, I was just gonna, uh, you know, I just want to make a statement. Um, I know there's a lot of confusion and like you said, uh, you know, the project started at two sixty and then, you know, with these, you know, unforeseen things, it went up to four fifty. Just in the future, is there any way they can keep the board updated, you know, in the process? So we're not surprised. Is that something that we can do moving forward? I just would like to be a part of the process. I mean, I don't know at what point you found out it was more than two sixty, but I just would like to be a part of the process. So when I'm asked questions or if I'm watching a town council meeting and I hear this new number, I think the board should be the last to find out. Um, I know you can't control, you know, when contractors, you know, make those decisions, but I just would like as a board member to be a part of that process. Thank you.
Right. We can certainly, you know, do our best effort to update the, where we think everything is going to come in. You know, even as of today, I don't have complete numbers on everything. I'm still waiting on bids to come in. So, uh, in trying to, uh, keep everybody informed, typically I would, you know, uh, provide an update to Dr. Brum and then she would notify all the board members simultaneously with that. So that would be the type of communication that would be issued where everybody has the ability to share in the same information at the same time on this, uh, because different individuals have different interests and, uh, you know, what they're looking at. So, you know, of course we can, you know, certainly, you know, do, um, you know, improve the communications there if that's desired. You know, many times, uh, you know, what is the appropriate latitude you entrust us with is really the, you know, larger question. Uh, because in trying to make decisions and work with individuals in a very, it's called dynamic developmental situation, trying to say, okay, we got to a place of what I think is an extremely good plan for uh, our students' safety and for the community. And money is the byproduct of doing that. Uh, you know, certainly, uh, you know, having a good rapport with everybody is important. We certainly strive to maintain that. So, uh, no problem in trying to provide uh, you know, supplemental information, but a lot of things do change from the, you know, the infancy of the ideas for doing things to what it actually turns out to be. So that needs to be, you know, recognized and appreciated in, you know, any commentary about it.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, you had said when the appropriate time. So, um, for me, and this is just personally, um, so when the project changed before you were going to present it to the, you know, town council, maybe, you know, send us an email and say, hey, we're going to present to town council this, you know, we had some changes come up. Um, just so I'm not watching it at a town council meeting, I think that would have been appropriate. Um, and just, I mean, I understand projects change. It's at four fifty now, it could change again. But I know, now that I know the process and I know that once we pass in the school CIP, you know, we didn't foresee, you know, a war and a pandemic continuing, but just before it's presented to the town council, if we're informed, even a quick email, like, hey, you know, we, we, you know, we looked at some bids and some things went up, I just uh, felt a little blindsided only because I had to watch it in a meeting and I would rather known, even if you found out an hour before the meeting, you know, I'd rather, you know, would have known then than during a town council meeting. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Just one more, uh, item for just everybody's benefit. Uh, this is the first project that we've done where we had to go to what they call the eight dash twenty four uh, review to the town council, to TPZ and then back. Uh, typically, if we're just doing maintenance work or building, repaving the parking lot, really not doing anything materially different, that would not be part of the process because we were building something new at the school with the parking lot. They requested that I would go through that process and the time factors that were associated with it. So this was the exception rather than the typical project that we do. So just to be aware of it, that you, you really wouldn't have that kind of, uh, dynamic involvement of the town council in uh, why the project is being brought forward to them unless we're doing, you know, like the Anna Reynolds project is an eight dash twenty four, but that's done through the architectural firm.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so bringing our attention back to this agenda item. Uh, F five, I would like for somebody to read the motion.
Move the Newington Board of Education Director Superintendent of Schools to move forward with all the identified projects and purchase recommendations as outlined above.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the role. Oh, Danielle Dros.
I just want to, do we need to add to that motion? Uh, like something about the, as long as there's the funding available in the town, the board CIP?
Yep, you can, you can amend the motion. You can make a motion to amend the motion.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to amend the motion to add as long as the money is available in the school, see, the public school CIP funds.
Uh, just so everybody understands the mechanics, since this is a town fund, they will not let a purchase order go through or spend any money down below zero. So it's not really necessary. They have the
So the town controls this? Okay, all right.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. And I, then I, then I withdraw my motion.
We let you withdraw it.
Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the role.
Michael Branda.
Yes.
Danielle Dros. Yes. Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Richard Laverrier.
Yes.
Amy Paradi.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Desika Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yopp.
Yes.
More to pass you now on this one.
Okay, so we have a couple more items or three more items that we have to look at here. F six is a report on professional learning. Mr. Furizi.
Excellent. Thank you so much for this opportunity to give the annual, uh, update on professional learning. Um, as you can all imagine, uh, professional learning is of the utmost importance for us to ensure that our students get the instruction that they need in their classroom. And as things evolve, we want to make sure that our competencies and capacity continues to evolve with it. But it's not just in the classroom, it's the overall services that we provide to the students and, and the families of, of Newington Public Schools. So it extends beyond just teachers and leaders, but also goes to uh, the type of learning that we provide to our drivers, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, our para educators, all support staff as well. And so what you'll see in here is a report that does outline and highlight all the professional learning that we were able to provide to date. Um, it consists of in-district professional learning, um, uh, learning that occurred on either full professional learning days or our early release Tuesdays. Um, and then it kind of illuminates, uh, all the work and efforts that we've been doing with our staff for this year. Uh, it also, uh, provides some of the specifics when we've used consultants. Um, I'm proud to share, and, and this has been a continuing trend, that most of the professional learning that we offer that you'll see in this report does come from our very own staff. And I think that just speaks volumes to the talent that we have in this district. Um, but there are times where the learning is, is needed by someone with a, a specific expertise. And that's when we, um, contract out and work with consultants. And you'll see the professional learning, uh, in here that we did use, uh, in contract out consultants for. Um, and then there's times where it's, you know, good for us to go out of district and learn with others. Uh, again, from experts on how to engage in some, some new strategies, some new techniques, some, some new learning that um, can help us be the very best at our jobs. So the report kind of, uh, highlights and illuminates all of that for you. I won't get into the details of that, but I will share with you that you'll see a majority of the offerings that are outlined in this report, um, focused on and aligned to our district improvement efforts. So you'll see many that are aligned to teachers working as teams or what we would call professional learning communities. Um, uh, very focused curriculum-based, uh, learning that goes on, um, both through contracted services and through our own staff and what they can offer. Social emotional learning, uh, training in the social emotional area for our students because we knew that coming out of the pandemic, uh, that would, is something that we, we really needed to focus on. And another area of focus in our district improvement plan, which is equity. So you'll see, uh, a majority of, of items, you know, hovered around those, uh, main topics. And then in the very back of the report, on the very last page, uh, you'll just see the number of hours that we have as opportunities to continue to learn and grow and, and develop as a staff. Another, another proud thing I would share is that a lot of the opportunities that we have to, to grow and develop are collaborative. And that makes a world of difference because we can work together to really, um, not just kind of take that learning and, and digest it collectively and try to make sense of it and calibrate on that learning, but then how we're going to apply it. And that's the most important thing. So we have our instructional coaches always available to help us apply it in meaningful ways that really do yield the results that we hope to achieve. Uh, and then we use the student data to see if we're achieving those. So, um, it is a full circle type of learning system that we have. Um, and this just kind of highlights all the areas that we focus on each year. So with that, I'd, uh, open it up to any questions that you might have.
Uh, Sam Sharma.
Um, just a quick question. Could you just recap like how much money we've spent on consultants and also like in terms of, uh, you know, my wife's a teacher, so you know, when she does some PD and she gets compensated, can you just share some numbers in terms of like, how much money you've spent on consultants and also like compensation to teachers?
Certainly. Well, our, our, um, annual, uh, professional learning budget um, trends around eighty thousand dollars a year of, of Board of Education funding. Um, but there are times where we do get other professional learning monies that we're able to capitalize on, such as grants uh, through the open choice program. There's five thousand dollars there. Uh, title grants offer us opportunities for professional learning as well. Uh, those are outside of the operating budget. Um, so it does sometimes add up to a little bit more than that. So some of our consultant fees come out of those grant monies. Um, I can tell you in general, from our eighty thousand dollar allotment, around thirty thousand dollars of that is through grant money. Um, there's another probably around twenty thousand dollars of that that, um, is used for sending staff outside of the district. And then the remainder is used for paying our internal staff. We do have a contractual obligation to pay internal staff fifty dollars an hour, uh, per, um, so per professional hour that they train our current staff that is outside their workday. And then they get two hours worth at fifty dollars an hour of planning time for every hour they present. So two hours of planning for every one hour they present, um, outside of the workday.
All right, um, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. very much, Mr.
Thank you.
Okay, the next agenda item is, uh, for discussion and it's, uh, F seven, and that is the board policies. So I'm not sure who wants to speak to this.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I will start and then, um,
Okay.
So we, we, we met a lot of times. And I have to say thank you to everyone on the policy committee because we really had some very rich discussions. So, um, the policy committee met three times to review and discuss and revise the enclosed eight policies. To best inform our work, our meetings included deep conversations around the implementation and impact of every policy. This included the review and consideration of data collect, collected from surrounding districts, additional information, uh, presented by Mrs. Friedman, Director of, uh, Curriculum Instruction and Seth Corn, who both gave up a lot of time to meet with us, um, and the application through the equity lens. At times we would table some of the enclosed policies to gather more information to best inform our decisions. All of this information can be found in the resource section of the NPS Policy Committee website linked that is located in tonight's agenda. And, um, we have taken a vote on each policy in your packet and agree unanimously that these policies represented the best interest of the students and our district. At this time, we welcome any questions you might have about any of the enclosed policies. So, and the next steps, um, are as a board, um, following today's discussion, we would have to vote to adopt them. And I know that the biggest controversial one is probably going to be the dress code policy. So before the conversation ensues, I do want everyone to know that Kristen Freeman met with, um, students at NHS. Uh, seemed to be kind of like the hottest topic there. Um, she met with the GSA and some other students and um, really discussed the inequity of dress code policies and how they are very slanted towards women or, you know, against women. So, um, that's kind of where we're at. women or, you know, against women. So that's kind of where we're at. And so I'm going to turn that I I have to give credit to Mr. Freezy because I said, I don't know how to say that so eloquently. So he did write it up for me while we had discussed though.
And I I need to appreciate Mrs. Droz for her leadership on this committee and the committee work. The members are just outstanding to work with. So we do appreciate it greatly. But the policy that we have before you has, as indicated, just been discussed numerous times and oftentimes tabled so we could gather more data, more information to make a more informed decision. And so what we bring before you today is a policy that has, some of which has been vetted, vetted, like the dress code, by students with their input, by staff with their input. And obviously, our our committee work. And then looked at, you know, through the lens of what other districts are doing. And so I I don't have too much to add other than the potential of maybe answering some questions. And I know there are other policy committee members here as well who who can maybe support some of those responses if necessary or available.
Anastasia Young.
So I was gonna ask, can you move the paper up a little bit? I wanted to see the gifted and talented students program, which I'm really excited about. I wasn't gifted and talented as a child, and I'm glad to see that's coming back. I couldn't read it. Sorry about that. Yeah, that's something I'm really, really, really happy to see that's coming back. Did they find teachers for the program? That was another question. And I see it says not later than July first. And what is that going to entail? I'm just really excited about that.
Thank you for that question. So the gifted and talented program policy that's being presented before you this evening addresses the the Legislative Act that requires that we have a procedure in place for identifying students gifted and talented. So that's what this policy addresses, the ability to identify those students through a PPT process. And so that's what you will see in the policy. It does not, however, put put out a program that would require the way in which a student would receive a program right based on that identification. At this time, we would leave that up to the individual teachers to work with students who are identified.
Is thank you. Is that something that maybe we can work towards in the future? I mean, when I was younger, we had gifted and talented. I don't know what happened. But is that something that maybe the board, I'm not sure if you guys are interested, you know, we could work towards having again? I mean, I know we have a lot of, you know, students in the special education program, my son being one of them. But I was a part of the gifted and talented program. I I know I don't know how much has changed over the years. I'm interested to know, but that's something I would like to see back in the school system if possible. And how we could go about, you know, starting that up again.
So I will, I will, I think, pass the question over to Mrs. Weaver, because I know she wants to respond as well. What I will say to that is the committee did spend a lot of time discussing what is an effective program and what, you know, what those criteria and what it might look like. And there are various, there's various research around that. And and I think if we were to to consider something like that in the future, we would want to really do our homework and research that to be able to make an informed decision on on what that would look like and whether it would or would not involve additional staff. But, Ms. Weaver, do you want to add on?
Yeah. No, I think that's a good question. It's one that we considered a lot. And I think Ms. Droz and I were going back and forth to on the perception of Newington, how we want to be viewed as a place where students excel. I was in the gifted and talented at Newington in eighth grade and what we had. And, you know, just to give context, this is like a couple grades, you know, and so part of this is we would get taken out of class and then it was just for like social studies. So it wasn't a big deal. But, you know, we talked from everything about what West Hartford's doing with certain programs for their math one. Ms. Droz can speak to that. In particular, we talked about what other districts are doing with their gifted and talented, the actual word of gifted and talented, and how it can have certain connotations for some and others. And why we're, you know, trying to be equitable about how we do it. And I think I even brought up, you know, I'm not sure if anyone watches Abbott Elementary, but there's a episode where they create a gifted and talented program. By the end of the day, they get rid of it just because of all the problems it causes. So I think we're really looking at through the policy lens that we can to evaluate where we can identify those students that are excelling because we we also, you know, you can be identified as quote gifted and talented at, you know, second grade, but maybe not at fourth grade, or, you know, those those are not linear or concrete or finite identifiers. And so for us, you know, I was looking at because they are identified by PPT, do you need an IUP plan and the amount of staff? Given our budget years, I don't think that's a realistic program to have at this time. And also the considerations of where we're at, we're, you know, looking and to Mr. Freezy's point, looking at how we can do that. It actually bleeds into one of our other policies that's new, also mandated by the state, which is the advanced courses. So looking as much as we can meet those needs of students who are identified as I like, we liked the the term like extraordinary learning ability. I would prefer it to be called that. But the state's uses gifted and talented as as the term. But those who have extraordinary learning abilities who are probably more advanced than, say, class peers, looking at where we can offer those advanced courses, adding more AP courses as we have and approved this year with ECE courses, getting more capital community colleges. Those kinds of things are where we're looking to meet those kinds of things. So it's definitely under consideration as we look more. And I just wanted to at this time, as I have the mic, say thank you to both Ms. Wagner and and Ms. Droz for just being incredible leaders in this and for investing the time into this. And also their institutional knowledge as teachers in different districts to be able to give us those reference points to be able to really inform the policy that we're doing, not just here, but how it compares to everywhere else.
Thank you. Can I say one more thing, Dr. Fletcher?
Go ahead.
So I went to high school in the south as well. And we had AP courses and we had advanced courses, and we also had gifted and talented. So I know, you know, school systems are completely different, a high school there and high school here. But I wonder if we can look at other school systems and see what they're doing. Because I was also an AP and we still have had a gifted and talented program. And I know state to state, it's different, but I mean, we had gifted and talented in almost all subjects, you know, in math and language arts, social studies, geography, well, in the south. But I mean, I think parents, and I think, I mean, I would as the board would support. I mean, if if that meant we had to hire more teachers to help children who were gifted, who maybe weren't being as, you know, challenged, I don't think that's something the board would be against. I know I wouldn't be against it. If that meant we had to, you know, make the budget, you know, work for adding more staff and, you know, allowing teachers, I would a hundred and ten percent support that, especially for our gifted and talented program. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brandon.
Just to clarify on all this, are we talking about every policy just in, like, are we just going for it, whatever we want to talk about in all of these policies? Or, yeah, you're good with that? Okay. I just want to thank the committee because, as Ms. Weaver knows, my two daughters at home, this dress code thing has been a passion of theirs. It's funny because I I was trying to see when we first started talking about it, and it was like right after the election. And my daughter Rose, who's in third grade, did like her own presentation about the dress code, and and then so did my daughter Nora. And I think what, to be honest, opened my eyes as dad of girls was when I opened up the dress code policy. And I think the last time it was written was two thousand or something like that. And obviously, things have changed. And I don't think the intent was ever to make it more focused on on females versus males, but I think it it definitely was. And I can tell everybody at this table, just speaking to young women in middle school, especially, they have felt a little targeted. And I think it's just a little bit more noticeable. I don't think it's intentional to target them. So when I read this, it was the first thing I read when the agenda came out, you know, Jessica gave me the the info that, hey, it's it's come and get ready. I I really appreciate this. I really appreciate how much work went into it. Talking to the students, talking to staff. I think the biggest thing that's that's going to be a challenge for the dress code specifically is enforcement and conversation around it. And I do like how you spelled out that we're not going to talk to students in front of their peers. You know, it's, I understand why the dress code was what it was at the time and and why we were trying to to ensure that, you know, kids aren't just coming to school. And my daughter will always say like, I'm not trying to wear a bathing suit to school. But I just, I can't say enough how much I appreciate this because I think we talk so much about equity and we talk so much about, you know, making everybody feel welcome in our district. And I think it it really, the dress code is something that I think got in the way unintentionally. And I just love all the work that went into this, and I cannot say enough how great of a job you all did on this. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Droz.
So it's funny because I'm on the policy committee and I wrote it, of course, and this is public. And someone pointed out, and I don't know if we need to just add one line to it, and maybe I don't know if we can do that if it's too late, that we talked about in the 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 dress code, it said students must wait, wait, hold on, the top has to have sleeves or straps, which someone pointed out could be a pretty promiscuous looking halter top. I don't necessarily, I don't know, I don't know if I a hundred percent like care about halter tops, but I could see how some girls might push that if we need to say that the sleeves need to go over the shoulders. And I don't know if we're nitpicking. But it's a pretty lenient policy to begin with. And so I don't know if that's one we need to add, that one, that like those two words to it. So Steve, I'm going to defer that to you and Jess and and Beth, who were in there for hours as we discuss this.
So I I would love the the thoughts of everyone around the table, but the the exact purpose of having this discussion is so that way, if we needed to make any revisions, we could before we do take it to vote at our next meeting. So so I appreciate you bringing that up. That's why we're here this evening. And and these great or new ideas are important. So I would kind of turn it over to anyone else for discussion around that.
Okay, I know. I think I think I might have brought up the halter top in this in the scenario because also there's like the over the shoulder. We got into very specifics for context on certain certain items or clothing that purport like disproportionately girls will wear over over boys. And so the certain things particularly that we've noticed have been dress coded. I myself was dress coded for things that I think my mom was like, this was appropriate. I didn't think anything of it. But I I would say fine for halter. I mean, for me, I can recall and I can bring up a picture of me wearing a children's place scort and halter top matching set. That was very cute. In fourth grade, I don't really see a problem with it. And again,
I'm sure you rocked it, Jess.
Thank you. Thank you, Danielle. As you can see, we had a really good time, actually. And I just want to put this out, like, this is truly like some of the most mess best work I've ever done. With this, it was so collaborative and Danielle just led the charge on this. Ms. Droz is an expertise. Also giving her perspective of West Hartford schools and a more lenient policy that has been in place and hasn't seen necessarily like issues with that. So I always understand, but I I think coming from the perspective as someone who has been a teenage girl at Newington High School, but can I think, you know, what I'll I'll just go back to what I said in the committee. We are raising portraits of the graduate, right? We are raising the next citizens. And if we don't respect these students as the adults that they are going to become and have not only the parents' input, and like we said, this is this is parent input as well. But having the respect to know that they can, you know, monitor their own dress to seek what's appropriate, that's a level of respect I think we should be giving to all students. And I get that, you know, we're talking about a large range of ages. But I think Ms. Droz mentioned too that, you know, like some parents have different views on what, but ultimately, it should be on, you know, that to decide what is going to be the case. And I don't foresee it being, you know, I talked to my sister again about this. I was like, was it super distracting? And she was like, no, like, people are tired. We have school. We have X amount of AP classes. We have X amount of this. And then we have after school. We're not, we don't care. We're just sweaty sometimes or we're cold sometimes. And that's really what it is. I I totally understand that, but I think I think halter tops are fine. I I don't really worry about a scandalous bare shoulder, in my opinion. But that's just me. And Ms. Droz and I have gone back and forth about this, too. We were really technical about what we wanted, like specifically talking about bra straps and other things. Those were something that the high school girls raised as well. So this was a very sensitive topic, one that got into very specifics, but I I support as is. I I don't think it it needs any revisions. This, Hugwagner.
Sad Wagner.
I just wanted to ask, were you talking, Ms. Droz, if you were talking about under like basic dress code one A, is that where you were talking about the potential change?
It's, I I just, I'm, I'm, you know, my heart, I don't know how people do this every week. Basic, yeah. Under number two, yes.
So students must wear clothing that
It says they must have, they must have a top, which I, of course, like, they don't need tops. Who cares? I think I shocked people with my very liberal attitude. But it says both a top with sleeves or straps. So I mean, because I remember like, yeah. I can tell you to go back to what, you know, Jess had said.
One A.
Yeah, I work in a district that is very concerned, you know, like they have like, you know, it's a high flying district. And we have the most lenient dress code. And it it's not a problem. And my friends' kids go to the high school and it's not. So I'm sure there's going to be kids who push it, but the kids are going to push it no matter what we put out there. So that's my take on it.
All right.
Just for process purpose, I bring this up. And obviously, this is more for next meeting, but just a reminder, the Board of Education will be voting on the policy itself. What we are under right now is the regulation in which the administration determines how that policy is enacted. So that's an administrative area, although we always want to bring forward the regulations to the board as well, so that way we're on the same page with how a policy is going to be administered. So I I only say that for that purpose, that just a reminder, we will be voting only on the policy part. But we always add the regulations in here when appropriate or revisions are being made because we do want everyone to understand like how we interpret that policy and then what we would enact.
All right. Thank you. So it looks like Michael Brand is up next.
Thank you. And that actually segue is really nice. So I just want clarification on this. So in terms of documentation, when there is a concern, that is, the administration will do it within each school how they like, we don't define how to document a potential dress code issue or anything. We don't instruct administration in the buildings to contact families. That's on them, correct?
Correct. And that generally is outlined in the handbook that you'll receive, the, you know, how violations of the dress code policy are managed.
Okay. And then the second question is, so if this is the district wide policy that we vote in the next meeting, can different schools alter this in any way? So could a school say, I really, I'm just making this up, I really hate spaghetti straps. So, yeah, I know. So could a school say, like, could a school choose to mandate or have that be a violation even though this policy as a district wide document would allow for the air quote spaghetti strap?
So I think when the policy allows for something, we wouldn't, we wouldn't make that a punitive measure against a student. But I think like all policies, what I would say in this one specific, because some policies more than others, it requires an opportunity to get together and do some learning around this topic. I know that was even brought up in a lot of our discussions, especially around this policy itself, that we are going to need to get administration together and we're going to need to be calibrated on what this all means. And and get some learning around why this policy has been changed and shifted to be the way it is. And that is something that we will make efforts to do.
So the answer is kind of sort of, but we hope not? Like they could, like they could alter this in a building effort to some degree, but these are the parameters that we're hoping that they work within. Is that fair?
Well, these are parameters we're at, we're telling them to work within.
Right. But I guess what I'm But I guess what I'm getting to, and I, I'm not going to give specific examples of other schools that I've heard of, but we've had a policy that I don't think, I think has changed in different buildings. I think the policy has been more of a framework rather than a, this is the policy and this is how we're going to enforce it. So I'm just wondering or seeking clarity, and I understand this is new, administrators in the buildings are going to have to have conversations. I just want to be sure that this policy is what is guiding their reactions and decisions in how they enforce it essentially.
And that is the exact effort that we'll work toward.
Thank you.
All right. So I see, Anastasia, did you leave your hand up or were you in the queue again?
Sorry, I left my hand up. I'll put that down.
Okay. Thank you. So Amy Pirati?
Thank you. And I think I had kind of the same question as Mr. Brenda where, um, I think currently there's different published dress codes for different schools. And I think, you know, maybe the enforcement is different and obviously I'm not in every school. So, um, I don't, I don't know that for a fact, but I think there are different published policies in the, um, I'm assuming it's in the handbook. Um, so, and then just a comment, and I'm not sure if this was discussed at all, but you know, at the high school level, which I definitely, and, and, you know, definitely appreciate all the work that was gone in. I know hours are spent on it and it's a very, um, important, I, I totally agree with having a policy that does not, um, discriminate against any, anyone. Um, but was there any discussion as far as like high school appropriateness versus elementary level? And is there any, can you talk about that?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Um, there was, and I think we also talked about, you know, the different phases, particularly, you know, when I was in school, um, many young girls were going through puberty at like nine or 10. Uh, there was like a huge surge of girls going through like puberty extremely early. Some would go late, right? Um, and that also has a, a big factor in how we apply those policies, I think, um, particularly when it comes to, um, and we say this in there, body size, body inclusivity, understanding, not everyone's comfortable in their body or getting to know their body during this formative time in your life. Um, so yeah, there was talk of, of making it different. I think, um, to what Mr. Freezy's point was, is that this is kind of that guiding document and that there can be differences within the schools, but also having the middle schools reflect each other, um, knowing that, you know, different schools do different things, um, but knowing that, you know, there is a certain age appropriateness, but ultimately to, again, it comes back to having our students, giving them the mutual respect of them understanding. And I think this is where more of the parent input will come in, um, to say, you know, this is appropriate or this is not appropriate. And we know everyone's version of appropriate is very different. Um, but understanding that, and I think this is for, um, the building principals to kind of get involved and to say that, um, and ultimately it comes back to like how that gets enforced. So I think that'll be the, the key driver is like there might be more, um, strictness on how that gets enforced in terms of if there is, and I, and I noticed too, in discussing with fellow board members, that there was probably more dress code violations at certain schools than others and at different grades. I don't think there's necessarily as much at the high school. Um, so it, it is in the process, but in terms of like how this, it plays into our policy, that won't change. But I do believe that there will be some tweaks that we can make to make it more adaptable and appropriate for the middle school versus high school. But again, I just bring back, girls going through puberty at different times. So, um, for me, that was kind of the guiding document, treating, um, obviously those ages are different, but for some it's not. So, um, that was kind of the thought process, if that makes sense. Does that answer?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Richard Laverrier?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. I do think that, um, to, that Ms. Drose's, uh, recommendation of clarifying that sleeves should, uh, uh, have to go over the shoulder should be, uh, included. Um, and I think that's an amendment that should be made. Uh, that's my first point. And my second point is that, uh, I don't agree with regard to shirts that, uh, you know, have people's, uh, stomach exposed. And I think that that's, um, I, I think that there's, I think there's too much, uh, room for, too much leeway, uh, for interpretation. And kids are going to school. They're not here to be fashion models, uh, or take, post in Instagram photos. They're there to learn. And I think that, you know, there's, there is a, a fine line between, uh, being inclusive versus, um, going too far. And I think that, uh, I think that, um, we do need to clarify that as about the sleeves. And, um, I, I don't like the, uh, the belly shirt, for lack of a better term. I don't know what you call them. Um, I don't like those, but I definitely think the sleeves needs to be addressed. Uh, thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I think at this point, we're going to be bringing this up again in our next meeting, the special meeting on June the sixth. So I don't really think we need any further discussion tonight. We can come back. We'll discuss it again. Any ideas of amendments and stuff we can address at that time?
There was, there was also a potential hope that if there was an opportunity to consider voting that evening, um, or maybe another meeting, uh, thereafter, only because if we are going to make, uh, a change like this, it would need to be prepared and published for next year's handbooks.
Yes.
Before school starts. Um, so we would just need to make that consideration as a board.
I believe that at this point with the discussion we've had tonight, that we'll be able to have minimal discussion next meeting and then bring it to a vote. I would at least, personally, I will try to move it in that direction. Okay. My voice is fading, so let me move on quickly to the last item. And Dr. Brummet?
Yes. This can be a very quick item. Uh, this is a program that we've been running in the district for, well, since 1995. And it's just an annual report that shows the board, uh, the number of participants, essentially, essentially folks can acquire technology for their personal use and then we allow them to have deductions out of their paycheck to pay for the, uh, computers. So this school year, it appears there are three people that have taken advantage of this program historically and in summary, uh, I know there was a total there. Three hundred and sixty-seven folks in total have participated since the inception of the program. So this is just, uh, an FYI for the board that we'd like to continue it. It's a goodwill, um, opportunity for teachers to buy computers, um, and then have it take another paycheck in a more, uh, you know, subsequent fashion and not all at once. So just basically an FYI, Dr. Fletcher.
All right. Thank you. I'm familiar with that program. It's a wonderful program. Okay. Any questions about that? All right. So at this time, we're going to move on to agenda item G, which is our public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Um, you can call in at eight six zero six six five eight six five nine. If you are still with us in Zoom, you can put your hand up and I will call out on you as well. And we do limit civil participation to three minutes. All right. I don't see anybody's hand up here. Are there any further comments by any board members? Ms. Weaver?
Um, just want to say thank you. And once again, thank you so much to my committee. Um, uh, I just wanted to say, um, thank you so much, Dr. Fletcher and Dr. Brummet for acknowledging the events of yesterday. And I think as a board, we just have a responsibility to, to acknowledge that. I think while we said timely, uh, unfortunately, but needed is our security and the, the, um, the faith we have in our, in our, uh, our, our security, um, to be able to keep our students safe. And I'm glad Ms. Pirati said, um, and I know she got emotional, but I think that's the gravity we're dealing with. So I just wanted to, um, let everyone know here and on there, um, there'll be a vigil tomorrow night at Mill Pond at seven thirty, organized by one of our, um, community members. I think it's just a good thing to be able to show up. So I just wanted to put that out there, um, and say Mill Pond, seven thirty tomorrow night. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Laverrier?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. And, uh, I do want to, uh, I, I apologize that I was late to this meeting. I do want to give thanks to, uh, Dr. Brummet for speaking with me that this morning, uh, you know, regard, regarding, uh, making sure that we are keeping Newington students safe. Um, I was very, very disturbed, distraught about, um, what happened in South Texas yesterday. I wanted to take just a moment, um, if it's okay. Uh, I'd just like to read the names of the people that, that have been announced, that have been, uh, uh, pronounced as dead at this point in time. Xavier Lopez, Ava Morales, Uzia Garcia, Irma Garcia, Emery Jo Garza, Annabelle Guadalupe Rodriguez, Navea Bravo, Jaclyn Jalen Cazares, Jacy Carmelo Louvenos, Jayla Nicole Silguero and Elijah Cruz Torres. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you very much. Mr. Brenda?
So I hate to keep on this point, as I know it's kind of tough, but I think back to when the Florida shooting happened and at this table, I spoke about it at the board retirement, um, Emily Guyan used that opportunity to, to really make sure that we, we pushed forward with, with social workers. And, and even though it wasn't in the budget, it was at that time, I don't know where we would be if, if, you know, she didn't advocate for that. And then the table obviously supported it, but it was all kind of driven by, um, the Florida shooting. And I was gonna read something that Mr. Malardo posted on, on social media, but I'm, I'm not going to, but I'll send it to everybody if you want to read it. Um, the basic point of it is, and please don't hear what I'm not saying, obviously student safety is so important. Um, but I don't want to forget about our educators who, we just heard a presentation about all of the things that they go through in that building that I'm confident nobody at this table that's an educator went to school for. Um, and I know a few months ago, had a conversation in the hallway with Mrs. Kraus just about, you know, just our educators and what a tough time it is and COVID and all the things. And, um, I'm hoping that we can find a way to kind of circle back to what our teacher of the year, Mr. Klett mentioned in terms of kind of being there for our educators, finding a way to maybe develop more social and emotional wellbeing programs inside of our district. Um, and that's not to take away of any of the amazing work we do with our students because that is so important. But I think we're at a point in this town, state, country where educators are not in a good place. And I don't want to lose sight of that with everything that's going on, um, and all of the challenges that they face. So I do want to just put out a challenge to our administration only because I've seen so much of the great work that our building administrators have done for the students, creative ways of really focusing on the social and emotional aspect of our students and their learning. And I'm, I'm challenging them to maybe in the next school year, start coming up with maybe some ways of doing the same for our educators. Um, I always, I always think back to that stereotypical, uh, movie scene where the police officer refuses to talk to the person who's there to help them get through a traumatic event, like they're the tough ones. And I always compare that to teachers because teachers, they get through their day and then they take it all home with them. And I think that I don't know that we have a system in place as a town, district, whatever you want to say, that teachers have multiple people that they can talk to in their workplace. Um, and that's not a slight on anybody. I, I'm not saying it in that way, so please don't, don't take it that way. But I'm just hoping that as we close out this school year and we think about ways to better support our educators, that we, we start to think of more ways to support their, their social and emotional and mental wellbeing because I think we're getting to a point where not only it's going to be harder to recruit teachers to get into the field, but I think it's going to get harder and harder to keep our great educators in our district in the field because at some point enough is going to be enough for them. And then I don't know where we're going to be. So I just wanted to say that. I appreciate you reading those names, Richard. Um, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody for your participation. I appreciate it very much. We will next meet again on June the sixth, which is a Monday night, and that will be a six PM. Okay. Just so everybody has a reminder, you will be receiving an email with the agenda as well. All right. With everything that's already been said, I'll wait for one more motion.
Motion, do it, John.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, dismissed.
Thank you.